I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a reminder, if you didn't sign in, you would like to sign in, there's a sign in up here at the front by the door. Do we have any revisions?
Yes, under consent items, we have two out-of-state trips that we're gonna add. Number four, down under I, let's add number four, which is Estill County Middle School, 8th grade trip to Chicago. And number five is Estill County Middle School Student Council, and it's for the lead conference, and they'll be going to Washington DC. And I believe those are the only two additions to the published agenda.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our staff and community recognition, so we'll start with our mountain movers.
Okay. Let's start with our classified mountain mover this month, and that would be Ms. Joyce Walters, our lunchroom manager at South Irvin, if she'd come on up. And Joyce has worked as a cook in every school in the district, she's been employed at Estill County Schools for 14 years. She loves people and makes South Irvin a great place to work, and she says she especially loves the unpredictable little ones at South Irvin. And I would say that is a joy every day to work at South Irvin and work with those precious preschool students. So Joyce, we appreciate you for what you do, and I award you with the Medal of Excellence for all you did for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next mountain mover, Ms. Isford, if you'll come up, I'll let you present this one. Also from South Irvin is Ms. Jennifer Palmer. And Jennifer is a preschool teacher at South Irvin. She's taught preschool kindergarten and first grades, and began her career at Hargit, and she's been employed in the Estill County School System for 28 years. And Jennifer loves to watch the kids light up when they learn something, and the smiles on their face says it all. And Jennifer does a wonderful job for us with our little ones at South Irvin. I would also present you with the Medal of Excellence for all you do for our kids. I'm gonna ask Ms. Neese and Mr. Beckley, both of you come up, because this month, we're gonna honor two community members. And that's Jimmy and Sheila Wise. And if both of them would come up, Jimmy and Sheila both together have a combined 54 years of service with Estill County EMS. Jimmy has 28 years, and Sheila has 26. They both say they feel fortunate to live and work in Estill County, and they're also blessed to take care of the people in the community they love. They love investing in young people in Estill County, and look forward to the partnerships and possibilities that the new area technology center will bring to their department and our community. And we'll have an update a little bit later on our area technology center. But both of these individuals are very heavily involved in our emergency planning. Sheila's worked with our group that formed with Eastern Kentucky University in some of our in-depth emergency planning and prepared training. Of course, Jimmy's always there. Last week before our special call board meeting, they were both here conducting a training for our staff for the protection of our kids. And it's always wonderful to have commuting members like these two individuals. So I'd like to present both of y'all with the Medal of Excellence for all you do for our kids and what you do for this community. Thank you all very much.
We're going back to work, sorry.
I hope you have a slow evening. And I guess our last recognition, I'll ask Ms. Hardy if you would. I'd like to, we were gonna do this last month, and Ms. Cornet was busy, but I'd ask Ms. Leslie Cornet to come up. And as you know, Leslie's been very involved with our academic teams here in Estill County. And she began her teaching career at Buckhorn in Perry County, and the school had only a high school academic team. As with many coaches, Leslie wanted her children to participate in academic competitions. She organized in Coach Buckhorn Elementary Middle Schools. There's a lot of information here, and for the sake of, but it goes on, let me just go ahead and I'll read it all, because I wanna do this justice. Because when you're nominated and selected for the Hall of Fame, you deserve the recognition. And I'll just read here what it says. "The fall of 1992 found Leslie teaching middle grades language arts and coaching the middle grades academic team at Willard Elementary, also in Perry County. The entire school was sponsored by Save the Children. Leslie firmly believed in her students, encouraged them to be believers in themselves. When the future problem-solving team that included her daughter Leah won the region events in the state Governor's Cup competition in 1994, her belief in her students came to fruition. Indeed, Willard's FPS team repeated as regional champs for the next five years, and at this time, despite his successful quick recall teams, Leslie came to realize that FPS was her calling. In 1997, KAAC Hall of Fame Coach Carol Combs at Perry County Central persuaded Leslie to coach the PCC FPS team. Ms. Combs and another Hall of Fame coach, Michael Cottle of Hazard greatly influenced and supported Leslie in her coaching endeavors. Ms. Cottle encouraged her to coach her daughter Nisa, a senior hazard to compete in individual FPS where she placed 6th in the state competition. Relocating to Madison County that fall, Leslie started teaching language arts at Estill County Middle School. She was quickly contacted by Estill County High School's academic team to coach FPS. Leslie took over for the middle school academic team in 2001. Building the team's confidence was a challenge. Team members were greatly intimidated by one local school with whom they competed in both league and Governor's Cup. Leslie set out to change that mindset and turn the tables so that the other team would lament, 'Oh no, we have to play Estill.' After Estill team members bought into their attitude, they began consistently winning again against the team they once feared. Sharing her passion for FPS, Leslie has been an FPS trainer for the past 12 years and has served as an evaluator for the International FPS Competition. Despite retiring from teaching in 2014, she remains active in Estill County Schools, continuing to coach the high school FPS team, as well as officiating league and Governor's Cup competition. In addition, she writes Governor Cup Quick Recall Questions and is currently a KAAC Board Member representing Region 7. She continues to live in Madison County, where she resides with her husband Ronnie, her two adult children Leah and Nisa live in Lexington. And we're very fortunate to have Leslie as part of our team and for everything she did. And again, as I said, to be selected to the Hall of Fame is a great honor for her, and we appreciate what you do for our students, even after your retirement. So thank you very much."
I've got some great students, great administrators and teachers to help out, too.
Thank you, Leslie, for everything you've done. Sorry.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our 2018 test data review. So first, we'll start with the district presentation.
I thought what we'd do, we'd have Ms. Lisa Reese give an overview of our test scores, and then...
If anybody would like to leave at this time, feel free to do so. You won't offend us, I promise.
Sure.
Leslie, thank you.
I told you.
Sorry.
I told you not to.
What we thought we'd do is let Ms. Reese start out with a presentation, just a general presentation, and then all of our principals are here to give you just an update. This is probably gonna take us about an hour, but this is one of those times that we want to focus on student achievement and just talk a little bit about where our schools are at. We're not only gonna talk about where they're at, we're gonna talk about where they were, where they're at now, and where we're headed in the future, so...
You're stealing our thunder.
Go!
What do you want me to say now? No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Our theme this year was Together Everyone Achieves More, and how appropriate that is. And as the district assessment coordinator, it's an honor for me to congratulate students and staff, our community, our parents, our board. We've made gains, and we're excited. Just wanna do a brief overview to the board of where we are now. In your packets, I'm not gonna go over the packets. If you have questions, I'll be glad to address those, but as Mr. Saylor said, each principal is going to share, so they can be more specific. You will notice in our data that we have reduced novice in reading for both elementary and middle, and that is a wonderful thing. We've also increased our proficient distinguished in reading. Overall, we had gains in math. Then, of course, our high school, they have a five-year graduation rate of 97.2, and the data that we have in the packet for high school is based this year with the new accountability system on the ACT scores. So this is the first year that that has occurred. This has been a big change for us, and will continue to be a change, as KDE is still in the process of making changes, and has even shared with us that next year's data will look differently. But this year, our identification is TSI, and that is Targeted Support and Improvement. What does that mean? Old terms, old accountability terms, that means focus schools. So yes, we still have a lot of work to do, and we recognize that. We have already hit the road running. We've met with our district leadership team, which includes our principals and assistant principals. We're looking at why we are TSI, and are in the process of developing an action plan to address the areas. Different ways that we have discussed so far, of course, looking at some different co-teaching models, continuing to work in our PLCs at the district and the school level, focusing on that individual data, and our instructional practices. We're not where we wanna be, but we are growing students. I'm happy to report that. You know, our mission is every child succeeds, and all means all. And we recognize that as a district, and our teachers are working hard, our students are taking an active role in their learning, and that is obvious in our test scores. According to research, it typically takes three to five years to turn a school around. So we are on track for excellence. Do y'all have questions for me?
And just so you all know, the first few pages is just sort of an explanation of the new accountability system. I'm sorry to tell you that the promise that was made that you could explain the new accountability system in the grocery store line at Walmart or Kroger while you were checking out, quite simply, that never came to fruition. It's just not true. As a matter of fact, I believe the accountability system and being able to explain the accountability system is even more difficult now than it was before. But what it does allow us to do is, we're still able to look at individual student results and how those students are performing as compared to their previous performance. The TSI label, about 40% of the schools in the state of Kentucky received that label, and it's for subgroup populations throughout the state. For instance, it can be for special ed, it can be for free and reduced lunch, it can be for race and ethnicity. So there's different schools that are labeled because of that particular new category that has been developed. I believe that you'll find out 90, probably 95% of them or more are because of special needs populations. And the only reason that number is not higher, because a lot of your smaller school districts and smaller schools, if they do not have more than 10 students at any one grade level, they do not have to report. It's almost like they get a pass because they don't have enough students reporting, and the reason why they do that is because they believe that it's identifiable information if that's released, that it would release information about those students and what their individual scores were. So if you have fewer than 10 students, you're not even reporting. So my guess is that if they were looking at all students, you're probably looking at 70, 80% of the schools that would have that label. But listen, that is still, that's not an excuse. We're going to continue to focus on those, especially from the standpoint, if we believe in core instruction, and that's what takes place in our classrooms every day, if we continue to improve with core instruction, along with some targeted interventions, we'll be able to see improvements, and we'll see that label of TSI disappear from our district. So we're very excited about those scores. I don't know, Ms. Reese, you've got anything else you wanna add?
No, unless they have questions.
I would ask that you look at one page, and this page, that is about the fourth page over, it's three from the back of your packet, and then we'll let the principals talk about their... It's this one here, Data 1617 to 1718. And last year, when we received our test scores, we started seeing some movement, but maybe not the movement that we actually wanted to see. And I know you, you three ladies, you weren't here when I was first hired as superintendent, but I said it would take three years. Dr. Beckley was part of that group. It'd take three years to see if the changes that we put in place was really making some differences and making an impact on how our students perform. And what I want you to do is, for instance, look at the data here, and what we've done is, we took last year's third graders, and then, or they were third graders two years ago, and then last year, they was fourth graders, and we want you to see the drop, not only in the number of novice students, but also in the number of proficient distinguished students, the increase in that. Because I know that was a concern that all of you all had, well, if we're focusing on novice reduction, what about our upper-level kids? What are we doing for them? And we've still got a lot of improvement we can make in that area, but you'll see that this change is not only taking place with our novice students, but it's also taking a place on the upper end as well. But if you look at third grade in 1617 to fourth grade last year, you notice that it went from 42% to 27%. Now, these are comparing apples to apples. These are third grade students that were fourth grade students last year, and you can see in reading, in each one of those levels, fourth grade, 30 to 23, fifth grade, 39 to 26, sixth grade, 16 to 19. So up a little bit, but we're doing a lot better than the other grade levels anyway. Seventh grade, 24 to 16. And then look at the number of proficient distinguished students, and how in each case, pretty much, they have went up in reading, they have. From 1617, third graders, 35% of them was proficient distinguished, now 42%. And look at that growth. Again, you're comparing kids to kids. 40 to 47, 40 to 51, 55 to 58, and then seventh graders who were eighth graders last year, 48 to 64. Those are magnificent improvements. And these are the things that you can compare. We might not be able to compare accountability indexes and all those things, but you can compare real student data. And then if you look at math, you see the same thing. And math has always been a little bit stronger than our reading scores, but you're still gonna see, almost in every area, that decrease. For instance, from third to fourth grade was 26 to 23. We did have an uptick in fourth grade, fifth grade remained the same, sixth grade was 13, as seventh graders, .06. There was only seven students at the seventh grade last year that scored novice in math. That is absolutely an unreal number for us, 17 to 20. And then look at the number of kids that are proficient distinguished. You can see those numbers increase as well, except for one area. So when you start comparing groups of students to performance the year before to the current year, you're seeing some big changes there, and that is because, not because of me, it's not because of our central office staff, we're just here to support our schools. That's because of the hard work of our principals and our teachers, and they're here to, our principals are here today to share with you, and if you all don't have any questions about that, we'll go ahead and let them get started. I think Jeremy has some things that they're gonna be on the computer, and I've told each one of them, five, 10 minutes. If it takes 15, that's fine, it doesn't matter. This is always a good time and a good discussion for us to have. So I think we're gonna start, we usually start, I've always been high school, started in high school, I'm gonna change that up, I'm gonna jump down, and I'm gonna go to Mr. Willis, and let him talk about our preschool data. Let Chris sit there and stew a little bit longer. And I'm not going in order either, so everybody just be ready when I...
Like Mr. Saylor said, my name is Stephen Willis, I'm principal of South Irvin Early Learning Center, and I'm gonna be covering the Brigance scores from last school year. These scores are connected to the current kindergarten students at Estill Springs. So the first question is, what is a Brigance test? So what happens with that is, we also call it in the building kindergarten readiness. It's a test given to students that are going into kindergarten, it's a national test, to see how prepared they are for that next level. Some of the things covered on that test are identification of letters, numbers, colors, shapes. Do the students know their name? Do they know their address? Also, there are fine motor skills involved in this test. Can they stand on one foot? Can they walk backwards? So it just gives the kindergarten teachers a good idea of the students they're getting. And I've always looked as preschool as the foundation of a building. And working in the building trade, I've always felt like the foundation is the most important part. It's not always the most beautiful or the most glamorous, but if you don't have a good foundation, then your house doesn't stand. So these are our test scores from last year. Now, this is for all kindergartners, every kindergartner sitting at Estill Springs. 62% of those students were ready, and 38% of those students were not ready. Keep in mind, not every current kindergartner went to preschool due to different reasons. Maybe they did not want to enroll their child in preschool, maybe we didn't have space. There's multiple reasons. Every kindergarten, and what happens, at the beginning of this school year, the preschool teachers and staff from South Irvin go to Estill Springs, and they test every kindergartner that comes in the door that first week of school. So this is where this information came from. If you extract South Irvin's students from this general population, if a child walked through the doors of South Irvin Early Learning Center last year, 88% of those students were ready for kindergarten, and 12% of those were not. This is every child that went through the school. And if you know anything about preschool, sometimes we have kids move in their slots, and we may pick up a kid in December, and we may pick up a kid in February. That same kid was tested as a kindergarten to see if they were kindergarten-ready. Now, on this slide, of our South Irvin students, 44% of those students were ready with enrichments. And what that means is, they scored a 90 or above. 44% of those kids got an A, if you wanna translate over that to that grade. Now, in the past, 2015 to 2016, our district, our kindergarten readiness score was 48.2%. And then 2016 to 2017, we jumped up to 71.5%, and then that bottom score is 88%. Like I said, 88% is the students that were within our district as preschoolers. Some of those students were in preschool two years. They came in at 3, so they were there two years, and they had wonderful teachers like Jennifer Palmer, that was just here. So they had two years of preschool for different reasons. So that's the scores that I have to present, and I think that was under five minutes. So, and Board, you also have in your packet data going back to 2014, as far as some test scores there also.
I think that's your very last page.
Do you have any questions for me?
That's good.
Thank you. I am just the only one standing up here, and there's an amazing staff over there, just like our cook. If a kid's hungry, then they're not going to learn. So we have amazing people like Joyce Walters, amazing bus drivers, and amazing custodians. It takes a whole crew. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. And just think about that, guys, anybody that sits there and tells you that preschool education and early head start in preschool is not important, they have no idea what they're talking about right there. When you see that 88% of the kids that attended preschool are ready for kindergarten, that means a huge majority of those students that do not attend are not, over 50% of them are not ready. And so there is a lot of work that takes place at South Irvin with those scores. And as we said, when we first arrived here, it was in the 40s, now we're in the 60s overall, 70, close to 70%, and with those that attend, 88%. They're doing a fantastic job at South Irvin. Y'all ready for the next person in the lottery? I'm gonna let Chris go, so he doesn't...
Look at Jessica back there, she's throwing her hands up.
Remember that trip last year coming up?
We'd already forgot about that.
Where's Mickey at? Where's Mickey, though? You're gonna stand up here, too. I don't have a PowerPoint, I believe it handouts. Showing your age. Does anybody else wanna handout? We've got a few more here. Did you bring any reading glasses? I just brought mine this time. You can't borrow mine. All right, at the top, there's just a basic summary. We're sort of on new ground at the high school, because in the years 2016 and 17, and before that, it was all based upon, proficiency was based upon, and of course, exams, ELCs, as we call them, and the quality course. So starting last year, and going into the foreseeable future, we'll see for how long, proficiency is solely based upon ACT scores their junior year. So when we think about that, that's where we talk about novice, apprentice, proficiency, distinguished, what'd you say?
In reading and math.
In reading and math, yeah. So you always know, as I'm talking, Mickey sometimes will mumble in the background to correct me, but we're used to, that's the way we work. You need one of those earpieces. Yeah. Yeah. So you'll see that the chart is broken down into three parts, proficiency, graduation rate, and transition readiness. So as far as proficiency is concerned, you'll see the measures part there, we're talking ACT, and I've got stars, by reading and math, and each of those scores is weighted according to the... And each of those scores is weighted according to the scale that you see right there. So the cut score for that, and the cut score means that that is the bottom five percent in the state. So the state sets the cut score based upon, I guess, what the score is of the bottom five percent performing schools in the state of Kentucky. So you'll see that our error proficiency score from two thousand seventeen and eighteen was fifty-five point four. So that's quite a bit over the state cut score. So we feel pretty good about that, to be honest with you. You'll notice over on the next part, the content areas, I've got reading and math bold there with stars. We had twenty-nine point three percent novice, forty-two percent proficient and distinguished in reading. And in math, we had thirty-one point two percent novice and thirty-one point two percent proficient and distinguished. So obviously, we want to get the novice numbers just as low as we can possibly get them. And that's our goal and that's what we're shooting for. So you'll see the science right there in the writing. The writing only had eighteen point one percent novice compared to thirty-five percent, point five percent proficient and distinguished. So I think the best way to present it to you all is what are we going to continue to do that we think is working well? We have concentrated and put a lot of emphasis in our PD on high yield instructional strategies. And just about all of our PD now is focused on, as Mr. Saylor said a while ago, what's the best kind of core instruction that we can provide? Because we feel like that's how we're going to make a difference. And I believe with all my heart embedded in that, teachers must understand that not every child learns the same and that within your class, you have to be able to differentiate. So that's a big skill we're working on. We do have our walkthrough instrument that we developed at the district level. And we're getting a lot of data and feedback from that. And we do a lot of district walkthroughs and a lot of things that we can see how the other schools are doing and we can offer friendly and professional advice to help each other. So we've got a great principal and central office leadership team going that now it's really become an opportunity to just help each other out and let us see how we can all improve together. And one big thing we're going to concentrate on is collaboration and planning between our core classes and our special ed. As Mr. Saylor said a while ago, we've got to make sure that we have quality instruction for all students. And that's how we're going to make that difference up as far as being a TSI school. We've got classroom systems in place. Our PLCs are growing and operating well. We have two teachers that have intervention classes at the high school in reading. We do IXL in math and what, are there other things we do in math? Go ahead, tell.
We have a transitional math class that we offer to our seniors for those that haven't met their benchmarks. And we also, we use the Khan Academy. That teacher uses that program now that, you know, a lot of our classrooms do have computers. So they can access the internet in order to practice and to improve those scores, those ACT scores.
So that's been a big focus. And you'll see too, where in our improvement plan last year, we included workshop information. We had a workshop the other day. It had a lot of stuff. It had senior trip. It had a lot of the expectations for seniors, but we were very pleased to have, there were probably over two hundred people in attendance to that. Sometimes it's difficult to get people out, but not, I think, when it's presented the right way. So it was just, it really gave me a smile to see so many people willing to come out, parents and in the community to be part of that. So we plan on having another one coming up in November for underclassmen. And we want the parents, we want to teach the parents things about their school, that the school that their child goes to, about what a benchmark is in ACT. What does it take to get into a dual credit class? What are some good study skills, good study habits? We just want to be good communicators with the public and with the parents about what it's all about and how they can help their child be successful. So we've got another one of those planned. And of course, we just want to focus, and I put that in capital letters, on core instruction. I did put our composite scores down there from two thousand fifteen, sixteen up to last year. And you see it, we went from eighteen point three up to an eighteen point seven. Really hope that that goes up. I love to see it at a twenty. That might be a big jump and a big goal, but I think we've got to set that high. And I really would like to see our composite really just jump up there. And we're working hard to do that. Of course, you see the second part of our accountability is the graduation rate. The state there in the middle was eighty-five. Our graduation rate is ninety-five point five. I think Lisa said over, what, a seven-year period a while ago? Five-year period, it was ninety-seven something. So our graduation rate at Estill County High School is outstanding compared to other districts around us. We did recently, one of the things that we think is going to help that is focusing on attendance. And Dicky Arthur does a great job helping us with some rewards and things like that we give our students. But we were declared the region sixteen winner, is that right, Mr. Arthur?
That's correct.
So we're very proud of that. I think that's the third time we've won that. Third or fourth time we've won that, seems like since I've been principal. We do believe in our interventions in our RTI. I've asked all of our teachers to develop a classroom RTI plan and a core content RTI plan because we don't want to exclude anybody from learning. We believe in second chance learning. We want our kids to be involved, our parents to be involved, and our teachers to be involved because we are a team and we've emphasized that. We have the persistent to graduation and a green dot program that's anti-bullying program that's run by Charlotte Southern, the Family Resource Center. And when we talk about TSI, the state graduation rate must have exceeded eighty-five percent. We were at eighty-two point eight with our SED population and that's why we were a TSI school. So we were barely a TSI school, but nonetheless, there's no excuses. We don't want that to be. So we've been studying. I know Ms. Tucker has talked a lot with the State Department and we have talked a lot with our local leaders about how we can make sure we get that number up. And then the last part of the accountability is the transition readiness. And you'll see there in the stars, it's meeting the ACT benchmarks, getting industry certified through VOTEC classes, CTE, passing the COSA test. Or a student can take six or more hours of KDE approved dual credit. And I think they have to get a senior better and they will get transition ready. So you'll see that it was, the cut score for the state was forty-one. We were at fifty-nine point three, which is not bad, but we've got to really, we've got to do better at that. I think that's one of the points that we've really got to focus on as far as the TSI is concerned, to make sure that we've got our career pathways aligned, that we're getting people passing the COSA exams. And I've got a few other suggestions down there. But one thing I like that our guidance counselors are now doing, they are doing individual career counseling. So they divided out the students by the alphabet rather than just one having freshmen and sophomores and the other one having juniors and seniors. They've just, they're all taking responsibility and are counseling all of the students all the time. So they're going down there, they're doing that. So they're actually doing more counseling. So I guess the way I would kind of wrap this up is, this is our baseline measure for the new accountability system. So we've got to work hard this year. And we are working hard to try to improve in every area, but we have really focused on quality core instruction. When we do that, I think our overall ACT scores are going to go up. And as they go up, I think our subpopulations are going to meet these requirements and we'll be out of TSI hopefully next year. Any questions?
So for these scores, when it says grade eleven, that's the juniors, there were juniors last year and seniors last year.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that gets, I had that explained to me three or four times, but yeah, yeah.
We do offer ACT workshops. We'll plug in there next week. We'll be having those after school for any students that are going to be taking that ACT coming up in October or actually anytime. But we try to focus that week right before the ACT is given on Saturday. So we offer those free of cost to any student that wants to stay after school. Our teachers provide that instruction and try to help them prepare to take that test and hopefully raise those ACT scores.
A common theme that I noticed throughout all of this data though is that our science is the worst of everything. That's kind of surprising to me.
Yeah, we have to explore and look at. Now they, you know, I always said about the time you get used to one thing, the state will change it on you a little bit. So there have been some changes in that area. But yeah, we've got to focus on the core instruction in that area and dig deep into it. But yeah.
Throughout all the grades, the science.
Science has changed across the board in terms of the, how it is assessed. There is a brand-new assessment that's unlike anything that we've seen in schools before in terms of what we're asking students to do. It's not an excuse, it's just the truth. We've got a lot of room to improve in terms of that. But it's a lot about being able to take what's called a phenomena and be able to explain the science behind why that happened. For instance, if you, a sample grade school question would be, you've got a rusty bicycle. Why is that bicycle rusted? Then that student has to then be able to pull on their science knowledge and talk about what causes something to rust. What are the conditions that cause that? And that's the question. From that question, they assess what our students know. That's different than anything that has ever been, students have been asked to do before. So it is, and I think this coming year, those are, that's all preliminary science numbers. This coming year, we still don't really have an answer to exactly where they're going to go because we're in the middle of a change at KDE also. But no, science is a point of contention. I don't know that science ATC, ACT scores are any worse than what they've been in the past. As a matter of fact, they're about the same.
They're not, yeah, I was going to say, eighteen point two, nineteen point oh, eighteen point seven.
Yeah, so they're up a little bit from what they were three years ago. But in terms of the state measure and how we're now assessing science, that has changed. But I'm confident that if we continue to work on core instruction, we'll see that improve as well.
That's a lot of critical thinking skills.
Yes.
And application.
Yeah. It's not the old days of, here's the test, choose A, B, C, D. The answer's not there for them. They have to be able to find that answer. And that is totally different from anything we've done in education really up to this point and assessed. That doesn't mean we've not used those skills before, but it's not been assessed that way before. So that's totally different.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get us off.
No, no, that's a good question, good point. And the high school probably, other than ACT, it's really difficult to get a gauge on exactly how they compare to last year because ELCs are out the window. They're not there no more. So we're comparing apples to oranges there. But a lot of good things going on here at high school, good attendance. I mean, but they also recognize there's work to do, so. The natives are restless.
They are. Want to flip a coin?
Ah, Jessica looks so nervous, I'm telling you. I guess we'll ask Estill Springs to.
Can I just brag on the high school this minute?
Yes.
May I ask you?
Yes.
I can see so much difference in the high school as far as their systems that they have in place now. We've been working, you know, for three years on our systems and trying to get things in place so that we can be systematic and do these things. And I have seen such a difference in the high school this year. It seems like those things are in place and that our teachers are really working within those systems and then they are working the way they should. So I think the gains to come, you know, but I'm very proud of the high schools. They seem to have bought in and are doing a lot better within that system.
And before Jessica starts, real quick, I had a student advisory. We have the superintendent student advisory committee at the high school went out the other day. And the number one thing that students told me was that they were happy with the change in culture. They felt like that school was, the discipline problems that they had talked about last spring and into last fall that were on their mind. They felt like that was improved, that they felt like the culture of the school's improved. As you know, they had their homecoming parade last night and there's a lot of excitement about things that's going on at the school. And if you want to know what's going on in your schools, talk to your students. And those students are not handpicked by me. They're just general students across all levels that I walk in there and say, okay, what's going on? And that was one of the things that they were really talking about was the culture of the school in terms of less problems in the classrooms with discipline. They felt more comfortable in their hallways. They were excited about the events that were coming up in terms of homecoming and the winter formal and things they've not been able to do or not been doing. So that's a cultural shift. And when kids feel more comfortable about being at school, they tend to do better. So the bottom line is, is that there's a lot of good things going on at the high school. But what I always like is Mr. Winkler's constantly looking for ways to show improvement in different areas. So thank you, Ms. Isaacs. Jess?
Okay.
Ms. Mullins?
Well, I did not do a PowerPoint because I'm going to do my data through interpretive dance. I was ready. Well, Stephen and I actually have a routine, right, Stephen?
Yeah.
I want to begin tonight thanking the school board and thanking the community for the support that you all have given us, not only academically over the last especially year, but I want to thank you for your support through the nickel tax because I walk in my building every day and see the fruits of your labor and the fruits of what you supported against adversity. And I want to thank you all for that. And I want to invite you and others to come visit Estill Springs. I was blessed to be a student at Estill Springs in nineteen eighty-eight when it opened. And now thirty years later, I'm blessed to be there to see such a magnificent transformation. So our building is safer, our building is cleaner, the air quality is better. We'll check the heat out soon, I think, but the air is great. The entrance, we have our frame up for the new entrance. But from everything, from the lighting to the ceiling, and there's still so many exciting things going on. It's just a great, I think it's a great time for our school district and it's an especially great time for Estill Springs. And I want you all to know that I do sincerely appreciate you and your support. Now let's talk a little bit about what's going on at Estill Springs. First off, we are busting at the seams in a good way. You know, we've looked over the past few years at what enrollment was doing and we were seeing a slight decline. But it must have been a good winter a few years ago because I have twenty-eight kids in six kindergarten classrooms. That was not projected at all. And we, Mr. Saylor has posted a teaching position and we are moving forward in looking for applications for that position because our enrollment is up and we're excited about that. So I want to let you know that as well. We have six kindergarten classrooms, six first grade classrooms, and six second grade classrooms. So we are healthy and doing well there and we're full, which is a great thing. I don't want to see empty desks or empty classrooms. So I'm very happy to report that we are growing. What I have here for you in the packet, and I apologize to those of you that I didn't do a PowerPoint for, but you can hear me. So I have at the top our Brigance data, which Stephen has already shared, so I'm not going to go over that. But I do want you to know that we most definitely see the fruits of the labor that come from South Irvin Preschool Center because those kindergarten students come in ready to learn. We don't have to practice routines or procedures as much with them because they already know how to go to school. So that has definitely impacted. Now, for my data, we are assessed a little bit differently and it's even changed from the state perspective this year. But I want to just kind of tell you an overview of how. But I want to just kind of tell you an overview of how we assess our students. We use, in kindergarten, in the fall, we assess their early literacy skills. That is their ability to identify letters, their early literacy concepts, things like reading left to right, front of a book, back of a book. Some kids come to school never having flipped through a book, so they don't know how to manipulate that book. And then we also look at high-frequency words, which are words that you want them to know automatically to help them read more fluently. So that is the data that I have given you. That is what kindergarten is assessed with in the fall. Now, if we have students who just blow those early literacy assessments out of the water, then we assess them with our FMP, which is Fuentes and Pennell, which looks at their reading score. But when you bump up to December, our winter benchmark, all kindergarten students take the Fuentes and Pennell assessment. And then they take it again in the spring. For first grade, all students are given the Fuentes and Pennell reading assessment in the fall. And that data is on the second page. But just for an overview of how we're assessing them, in second grade, we did not spend time, and this was a decision made with support of the district, we did not spend time doing the FMP assessment on each of those students. We took their spring FMP assessment and we went straight into instruction. The reason we did that in taking that score is because those teachers daily check those scores and move them according to where they need to be. So if a student came in in second grade and that, that teacher started them in the group they were at in the spring, they would immediately know, we've had a little slide here, we need to back up, take this back, start some instruction at this level. So to say that they didn't do that assessment doesn't mean that they didn't have a clear view of where they needed to be. What we were addressing is, we need to get started now with them. So that is why we did that for second grade. And that is how we assess them for reading. For math, all students in the entire building take the SNAP assessment. Now, the SNAP assessment is a numeracy, literacy assessment, but it doesn't give an overall score like what you see from the FMP or MAP and things like that. The SNAP gives you individual student scores, which then inform the teacher about exactly where that student is at. So I would have to report on about four-hundred-and-sixty-two students individually to really tell you what those scores were because there isn't an overall. But I can tell you that even as of this October, our staff meeting in October, Ms. Arthur will be working with our teachers to find out exactly where those individual students need to be receiving math instruction through center work, through whole-group work. We use that assessment, which is also given fall, winter, spring, to really monitor where they're at and what are they ready for. And then the MAP assessment is only given to second grade. Now, we're kind of in a unique position right now that we don't have a computer lab. So the high school has graciously agreed to let us borrow their mobile Chromebook labs. And beginning next week, our students are going to get to do, our second-grade students are going to do the MAP assessment with a Chromebook, which I'm excited about. I think that will be something we can really push as a district initiative, something they can look forward to, that as you get older, this will be something that you'll have your hands on. So I'm excited about that. We did not want to lose the opportunity of benchmarking our second graders in the fall because that benchmark is math and reading. And it's just another layer of information for us in the classroom. So we're excited about those, the use of those Chromebooks. So that's an overview of how we assess. It's a lot of pieces that seem disjointed, but they all come together to make a picture of one individual child. And we spend days, it's a constant revision and re-looking at where is this child? In years past, we only did benchmark assessments and we only knew, well, from fall to winter, they grew. Well, from winter to spring, we saw some growth or there was some decline. But those benchmarks inform us, but what we truly spend time looking at are those weekly, those daily formative assessments that tell us exactly where we need to be in our instruction. That's what tells us what, what the kids are ready for. If we waited between benchmarks to make decisions, we would miss opportunities to help enrich students who were ready to go. Or we would miss opportunities to provide structures and support for students who needed that extra little bit of help. So that is what we truly base our conversations around. Now, I'm looking at the data. You can see the three areas, areas of the early literacy skills that we're looking at. As far as the first and second grade, I have given you first grade's FMP data. And then for second grade, I've given you their September running record. And that, what is important about the running records for the reading is that every month their level is checked. So yes, we do look at it from a benchmark perspective, but that's not enough for us. We look at it every month. So that I have provided that for you for second grade. And we have done that, this will be our fourth year in doing monthly running records. And each year, we are absolutely amazed at the growth from fall to spring. Fall always catches us in a, you know, moment when we look at that and see how many students are below where they need to be. But it is amazing. It's a testament to the instruction going on in, in our building of how much growth that they experience. Second grade is actually in a better position this fall than they were last fall. But I will brag on our second grade that last fall, they ended with seventy-five percent at or above grade level. The year before, it was seventy-eight percent. That's still not good enough for us, though. But I can tell you that last year, I believe they went from twenty-six percent at or above in the fall to seventy-five percent. So they take it very personal and they take it very serious that that growth needs to occur. So when I sat down with my teachers and support staff, leadership team, and we looked at what the data actually tells us, what we're able to determine is what is our as-is state? We own that today. We own that, we owned that yesterday. Where are we at? What do we need to do next? We've set our goals for growth as a grade-level team and as a school. And we are continuing to look for ways to address the summer slide. I have Mary Rader here, who is our Family Resource Director at Estill Springs. She works very consistently with families in the summer to provide literacy opportunities and information to them so that they can not experience such a slide. It's like playing the piano. You don't do it for a month, you, you know, you start to lose that. And for those kids, that muscle memory leaves really quickly. And it takes us a while to get them back on track. So we want to continue to promote literacy in the summer through working with Family Resource, our public library. We want to continue to do that. What does the data not tell us? The biggest thing that teachers talked about is that we don't really know what impact that construction is having. I can tell you all, I think it's been minimal. Second grade has been a gem. They have literally moved from one wing to the other wing in October. But those students have done it fluidly. The teachers haven't batted an eye. And I can't say enough good things about momentum construction and the respect that they've had for our school day. There's not been interruptions, they're not coming in and out of the hallways. They are in a specific area, that's where they work. Honestly, if you walked in our building during the day, I shared this with Lisa earlier today, you really wouldn't know they're in the building unless you saw them in the specific wing that they're working in. But I really don't think it's had a huge impact. I think the kids are excited about it. I think they are noticing little things, but I don't think it's impacting negatively. But we don't know what little bit of maybe distraction that it might provide for them. Something that we're celebrating is that we are using this data in creating specific steps to student mastery. You know, before you were kind of tossing it out there and, well, let's see if this will work. Well, let's see if this will work. We don't have to do that. We know specific things that we need to do. We have an intervention team that is powerful. We have special education teachers who are providing tremendous support. So we know specific things that we can work on. And I do believe that this is starting year six for me, which seems odd. But in the six years that I've been there, I just see the rigor of the, the instruction changing so much because those teachers really own the process of working with their curriculum and their content and becoming high-level, quality teachers. For next steps, we are spending some time identifying our CUSP kids. Those are the kids who are right below meeting that goal. And for primary kids, so many times, it's one level below. But if you look in, in, in first grade, that's forty-three students who are one to two levels below where they need to be. This is the time in their life to close that gap. This is the time to say, this is where, what's hanging them up, let's fix it. If we don't change that in first grade, it's bigger in second grade and it's huge in eighth grade. So we, we really own the fact that it's our responsibility to close the gap and to clear those misconceptions very early. We are identifying leverage points. We had that discussion, Lisa and I are fortunate enough to be involved in NISSL this year, which is what Andrea and Tanya did last year. But we, our lesson today was about what can you leverage? You know, we go around and say, oh, all these factors are happening, we could do better if this was right. There are a lot of things we can't fix, but there are a lot of things that we can leverage, that we can control. And we want to continue to identify what can we do to make this better for our students, to make our school better. We're continuing to do our Plan Do Study Act cycle, which goes on through PLCs to analyze the content and data. We do common planning at least once a month, if not twice a month, where our grade-level teams meet together very intentionally to look at data, to look at content, to look at formative and summative assessments, and to talk about individual students. We are going to be doing data cards and a data wall at our next common planning. And one thing that we're really pushing at this point is our attendance. I brought as an example for you two attendance reports that my attendance clerk, Kelly Ventures, printed. I didn't give you a copy of these, but I just wanted to show you how specifically we look at our attendance. This is our attendance for kindergarten first and second last year to this date and then this year. And it really allows us to identify who are the families specifically who have truancy problems. What can we do? We work with Mr. Arthur, we work with our Persistence to Graduation Committee, which includes Mary as our Family Resource. We have special education involved, intervention, myself, our clerk. And we really look at what are the gaps for these kids? What's making attendance hard for them? You know, we know there are students who are sick, but we know there are students who are starting right now, creating bad habits with attendance. And if they're not there, we can't teach them. And so many times when we identify kids who are struggling in school, we can't identify, are they struggling because they can't do the content or are they struggling because they're not here? Because you all know as parents that it doesn't matter what kind of good packet I send home, it will not replace the instruction that takes place in that classroom. And so many times, the students who are performing below benchmark are students who also would be tagged for truancy issues. So we're really trying to make a push on attendance. The back page just kind of shows the continuous systems of improvement that we have going on at Estill Springs. We want to continue to look at kind of our leverage points. We are continuing to work with our systems of intervention. We are continuing to look at our key core work processes and what we can change within the school and to just own our data and where we're at. That's, that's one of the biggest pieces, I think, that causes failure is when you're not willing to own your data and you just want to dismiss it or blame it. And I think as a district, similar to what Chris said, not only do we own our own data, but we own all of these kids. If a student does not graduate, it's my fault. We all feel that pressure that we are one district, we are one school. And it matters, what I do today matters tomorrow for Charlotte and Andrea and for Chris. And, you know, I have a student, I mean, I have a child in every school in this district except South Urban. I refuse to provide another one for South Urban. For the children that I do have in the schools, I want to tell you that they're having a phenomenal year. And I have thanked their principals personally. But something is different this year. The momentum is different, the spirit is different, and the ownership is different. And I feel it as a principal, but I also see it in our schools. So I'm proud of our data. We have a lot of room to grow. We own that. We now, as, at the state level, any school that is a primary school, meaning, you know, we don't take K-Prep. Now, we have owned that data always. However, the state now does say that if you have a primary school, they do adopt the label and the scores from the school that follows them. So that will change nothing about how Charlotte and I communicate about data because we've been communicating about our kids before they made us. But what I'm saying is, is that I think it's good that the state recognized, hey, they do own that. Let's, let's let them own that in a, in a public way because we don't want to be TSI, but we're looking forward to the continued growth that gets us out of that. So I welcome any questions that you have about data. I welcome you to come visit our classrooms anytime. It's, it's a very adventurous place to be. Lunchtime would be a great time to come. We did have a fire alarm today during lunch. That was fun. So we're hoping that other students don't figure out that that's a really fun bar to push down. But it's, it's a great time to be a student, a parent, and a staff member here in Estill County. So I welcome any questions at this time. Okay, thank you all.
Sort of piggybacking on what Jessica said, I was fortunate enough to meet a parent during open house at South Urban. And he told me that he had a child in South Urban, Estill Springs, West Urban, the middle school and the high school. I thought about honoring him as a community member of the, of the month, but his wife was quick to tell me that she had a lot more invested than he did in that, so. But I appreciate what Ms. Mullins is doing. Change up a little bit, we got three left. I'm gonna ask Ms. Jeanne Webb if she'll come up and talk to us just a little bit about what's going on at the Success Academy. The Success Academy really doesn't have a lot of data points that they can point to, although their students are part of the assessment. But I just want to talk about some of the changes that's taken place at the Success Academy and some of the initiatives that she's been able to bring to us from Fayette County in her time there. And Ms. Webb, we'll break you in right here in Estill County here tonight.
I was really banking on going last, but you know, that's what it is. No, I'm actually really happy to be here in Estill County. It's, it's been a warm welcome and kind of used to that southern hospitality that I grew up with versus my previous experience. But kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Willis said, and he's building the foundation of the kids within the school system and the structure. Not all the kids, if we look at them as the bricks, are easy to mold into the bricks that build the structure of the school. In saying that, some of our students require some extra help in becoming molded into the students that they need to be to become young adults. Not all the students in the Success Academy are there for behavior. Some are truancy and some students just haven't been in the regular school setting enough to feel comfortable. They may have a lot of anxiety or other difficulties that have prevented them from being successful in the traditional setting. So with that being said, coming here this year, I looked at some of the things that were in place and compared it to some of my experiences with students that have struggled in alternative schools. And one of my biggest things that I'll always say for kids is that it's important for them to have a positive place to come to when it comes to school. So one of my biggest, biggest focuses is to create a positive atmosphere and to help develop those positive relationships with students. And I think we're working really hard to do that this year. You know, a student that's engaged and happy to be at school, even though they may not want to do something, they're more likely to become involved and more focused on their schoolwork versus someone hating to have to come to a place every day that they really don't want to be at. So that's the biggest change that we're focusing on, is getting to know our kids well and help leading them in the right direction. We started off the beginning of the year creating and implementing a PBIS system, which is the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports for our kids. A lot of times, some of our kids experience more of the consequence side for their behaviors and the things that they do. And we want to recognize the positive and provide the incentives to continue to do well and to celebrate those, the growth in either behavior or in even their work habits and skills. We've become systematic in the referral system so that it requires RTI or a response to intervention for both behavior and academics. A lot of times when we talk about RTI for students, we think of it in terms of academics. But not every student has learned the social skills that they need to be successful in school. Some have experienced traumas in their life and require extra, extra counseling and supports in order to be successful in school. One of my big things is that I've tried to increase the communication between the school and parents and get back to them as quickly as possible. and parents and get back to them as quickly as possible and keep them up to date with how their students are doing. One of the things in the high school classroom with so many students in so many different areas, we did look at students and their needs this year and found ways to have direct instruction for an English class and for a history class this semester, World Civ, for students, so that they also, they have the interaction between the teacher and the student, so that when they go back to the regular school, because that's our ultimate goal, is that they are used to the teacher-student interaction. And then for some courses, they do have to do online for their lectures and things like that. And then one of our teachers has been focusing on project-based learning for their learning. It's exploratory, taking her language arts skills, and students are trying to determine if they were to open a restaurant, well, what data would they use to open it? What would they design to attract people? Menus, a business plan sort of idea they have to write and propose to their audience of what type of restaurant that they would want to open. So we've tried to hit the diverse needs with academic and behavior when we're looking at kids. Some things that we are striving to continue to improve on is to continue the interventions for our students while they're at the Success Academy. This, all of our middle school students are in our reading class. If they have deficits in math, we have, provide remedial interventions for math as well, additional time for reading. If they need to do credit recovery, we do credit recovery. For behavior issues, we have collaboration with the homeschool and outside agencies for counseling or therapies that may be needed as well. And then we have partnerships for counseling and other services with the outside agencies. And then we've been trying to become more systematic about collecting data in regards to students' behavior and their academics, so that we can support them in their academic growth and their behavior growth in order for them to go back to their homeschool. Any questions?
Ms. Webb, thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, it would be wrong of us not to hear from the Success Academy. If we believe every child succeeds, those are our kids, and we have to provide the supports necessary to try to help them become the young men and women that they need to be, because I truly do believe, you've heard me say it 100 times, if every child has a destiny to do something great in their lives and the lives of others, it's up to us to try to help them get to that, get to that level. And I appreciate Ms. Webb, and she's brought a lot of new ideals to our district, and we're able to use some of her expertise and some of her, especially with PBIS and RTI intervention. We've been able, she's been a good resource for our other principals coming in. So we appreciate her coming to our district. Oh, we're down to two, and of course, I'm gonna choose West Urban next, so.
I'll just talk for 20 instead of 10. Listen, Ms. Hall back there's already given me the one. 10, you have 10. She would not give me any other nice fingers, only 10 nice ones. Well, we're excited about our data, and I've presented it a couple different ways, so we probably won't take the time to look at all of these, but I'm all about color. The first one, though, doesn't have a lot of color. Do I switch this glass, or do you do that? I do. Okay. I would like to.
Technology is a wonderful thing, when it works.
They all swatched me. I pushed the button. I, I had to take a three-year look. I know we're really only looking two years back, but I was so excited by our, our data that I just, I just had to leave the other years. So when I began at West, this, these were our reading scores. We were sitting at 36 and 3/10th percent novice. This year, we're down to 26 and 4/10th percent novices as a school for reading. We're like on cloud nine. We, we know we still have work to do. That's not the number we want, but we're so excited that we continue to decrease. And I'll just skip right over to proficient, because those are the two big numbers. We always say that apprentice spot is just a nice parking lot. We're either gonna drop them and lose them, which we're not gonna do at West, or we're gonna move them on, on up to proficiency. So we actually have increased the proficiency in reading as a school, too, from 28 and 4/10ths to 33 and 6/10ths. So we're excited about that. Now, as Mr. Saylor said, our math, we had a little hiccup yes, last year. It seems like just yesterday. But last year, we had a little hiccup, and we did not decrease that novice quite as much as we would have liked. We actually let it jump back up a little bit. We'll talk about next steps and how we're going to prevent that from happening again this year, that we will not only get it back to where it was last year, but lower. We have that plan, and we know it's gonna happen. Our proficiency, because of the hiccup there, meant we didn't quite grow at the proficient level that we would have liked. Now, the science, this is the thing we were actually excited about. When we saw the new science tests and the way they were presented and knew how different they were from what we'd done in the past, we thought, oh, my goodness, there's absolutely no way our kids can do this. Well, this is where we have to have faith in these children and their creative abilities to think through things, because, boy, did they show us. If you think about our novice rates, our novice in science was actually quite low. And the other good thing, if you do think about apprentice being the parking lot, look what we're poised to do next year. Our parking lot is crammed full of kids that we can move to proficiency. So we're real excited about that possibility next year, that plan. We do know we've got to get that proficient and distinguished up there. Social studies, that's from the hard work, basically of our fifth grade team, because last year, they were really pulling us along. This year, we've got things in place so that students at all grade levels are getting more social studies and science. So we're excited about that plan. But even with that, last year, look at the number of novice in social studies. 10, 10%. That is fantastic. So we're, that's where we want all of our scores to be, and we've already hit that in social studies. And we want to continue to grow our proficient and distinguished. Our writing, we were also excited about. We know we can do better, and we've already made some steps in that, in that area. But in the three years, we've decreased the number of novice from 35, 38 and 1/2% to 18 and 8/10ths percent. We're excited about that, and we know we're going to do better. Again, you've already heard one of my, my nearest partners speak. I know that Jessica's working really hard on that writing through guided reading, and so are we at West, so we've already seen great gains. I know I have several parents in this room, so I'm hoping some of you have seen some of that great writing from home. We've been excited about it. The next page, I'm gonna kind of skip through, but you all have this, board members, in your packet. It just gives you, if you really want to go through and see the, the number of change just between last year and this year, that's what that page is. We won't go over each score on this next page, but this is the hiccup I was speaking about in math. It is an unfortunate hiccup, and we have taken it very seriously at West Urban. The fact that we have red on this board offended all of us, and we feel, we personally own the fact, we know we let some children down. And we are really working hard this year to make sure that does not happen, because we want green on every single box. Green, the color indicates a positive movement. In, in the novice area, the, the direction we want to go is down, but in proficient distinguished, we want the number to go up. So we just chose to go very simplistic with colors. Red is a negative movement, green is a positive movement. I can tell you right now, when you look at this board next year, you're gonna see green. On this page, as Mr. Saylor mentioned, we do look some years just, just at the data from year to year. That really, in my mind, helps me take a look at the instruction and the types of things that are happening systematically. You've heard us talk about systems. So when we compare year data to year data, we're kind of looking at how is our system working? We knew we had some hiccups there. When we got to the point where we were comparing groups of students to groups of students, third to fourth grade and fourth to fifth, well, we did see that we did manage to make some gains in fourth grade. From third to fourth, we had students making some positive movements. In fifth grade, however, that's where, to be honest, we lost the momentum. Does that make sense? Reading, super excited about reading, because you can see there, most of our board is green. I don't, and seeing that awful, this is the one I should want to talk most about, but you can see we're putting a lot of effort into that, that math improvement. But I am super excited about this reading, and I'm super excited about what it's gonna look like even next year because of the changes we're making. Reading, green everywhere when you compare groups of students to groups of students. We're making the gains. On-demand, we're making the positive movements there that we need to make. We're reducing novice, we're, we did decrease the number of proficient just a little bit, but we made it up in distinguished. So when you look at our PD number, our proficient distinguished number, we were still where we needed to be for that. We know for ourselves that's not acceptable. We don't want that proficient number to go up. Social studies, all green. So as a staff, I mean, as a principal, how could I not stand up here and beam? And I wish I had the entire staff with me as well, because they, they are the ones that get the credit for this. They have worked to make it happen. Now, the other piece of data that we are spending a lot of warranted time on is our FNP data, and our school has not always presented that data to this district. But I think that it is important to follow through with what Ms. Mullins and the staff at Estill Springs begins, and that's really what we're working on this year at West. And we are seeing many connections between this data and the MAP data. Our MAP data corresponds with our K-Prep data. So this data is indicative of where we're going to be next year and where we're going. Now, if you think about this, if we look at grade level comparisons, we want students to be, let me explain this. There are four reading stra, stages in the program that we're using right now, and the four reading stages have different reading characteristics, different reading levels of books, those kinds of things. At West Urban, we want all of our students honestly and fluent. Third grade, it is okay to be in transitional. And I want you to look at our numbers. This is our most recent data. We are super excited to report, we do have the majority of our students working in the fluent range. And we are seriously working at getting the students to the level of writing the same thing that they're being able to read, and we haven't had that intentional focus in the past. So not only are they able to read it, but they're going to be able to write it. Think about the career options that's gonna open up for kids. Now we get to the good part, and I'm gonna ask the leader of our leadership committee to come up and share some information, and, board members, this is in the second packet that I gave you, because now we want to, yes, we took some time to reflect on the data, but the exciting part is what are we doing about it? This is Ms. Tanya Miller.
Hi, everyone. Well, we've been using our PLC protocol for quite a few years. We're doing our Plan Do Study Act. However, we know that it's a continuous improvement protocol. We know that last year, when we looked back at what we were doing, we were very strong in the Plan and Do stage. However, we felt that we had a weakness in Study and Act, and we really feel that if we target these areas, that's going to help move some of those students who are falling, falling behind. So what we've done is we have started to tweak our protocol, and the main thing in the study part is instead of looking at summative data, we're going to also be graphing our formative data. So weekly, we will have a graph showing our students, and we're also going to break it apart into students who are gifted and talented, regular education students, and our students who have an IEP. So then we can really look at those subgroups, and we can target them based on how they perform against each other, because we want all of our students to perform the same. And we know that, so we're being very intentional with what we're doing. From there, looking at that data broken apart like that, we can make a plan for that core instruction, as well as for our differentiated instruction, our RTI, so that we can make sure that we move those students, every student in our school, not just our middle run-of-the-road students. We are also then, of course, after we do the study, we're really focusing on that act and our Tier Two instructional plan for those students. So in our weekly PLCs, that is going to be a main conversation point for us, so that as a staff, we can move forward. The other thing that I have here is the first part of the packet. Last year, at the end of the year, we decided that we were going to make a syllabus for each of the subjects that we were teaching per grade level. So I have our ELA and our math syllabi for fourth grade. And when we first thought about this, we kind of said, well, we're elementary, why do we need a syllabus? But the more we thought about it, the more we saw the importance. It's about holding ourselves accountable, holding our students accountable, holding our families accountable, and working together. So we intentionally went through this and worked together within our grade level to make our syllabus. But then we came together school-wide, and we looked at how a third grade, a fourth grade, and a fifth grade syllabus connected, and what we realized was that they were very similar. We have the same beliefs. We have a lot of the same things going on. So we worked to make it as similar as we could, so that as our students come in from Estill Springs, they start in our third grade, but then when they get to fourth grade, it's very familiar. They're gonna have this document. We gave this out at open house, and then they go to fifth grade, and they see the same thing. We still have a little work to do with this. What I would love to see with this is for it to be a more critical part of our students tracking themselves, put in data notebooks, having them check off where we are in the progression of our units, having them know how they did based on their summative and formative assessments. So I think this is a great tool for us that we've started to use, but I think that it's something that we can continue to develop throughout the next few school years.
Another piece that we've also worked on is just, again, realizing that if we communicated clearly with parents, we were also clearing up communication in our school. So we wanted to not only talk about grade, our book levels, we really wanted to hone in on that idea of reader characteristics. So after the syllabi pages, there is a page that says it is the Guided Reading Progress Report. This is a document that we shared with all parents at our recent open house on Tuesday, and hopefully they went home in the Thursday folder, if our kids managed to get home with all those papers. And, but we really are honing in on the book level, as well as what, what are the characteristics of a reader? So I gave you an example of a transitional reader report in your packet. So if your child were at West Urban and they were reading at a Level M, you could also look down there to see, well, are they consistently stopping and trying to fix errors? Are they, are they solving words? Are they applying phonetic skills? If it was checked, that meant that your child was doing those things. If they weren't, then if you were a parent that didn't understand this report, you would at least have something to come to school and say, I know my child needs some help. What does this mean? So we understood that the report might not meet the needs of everyone, but it would be there. The purpose was to improve communication within our school, as well as with, with Just like Mr. Winkler said, we really, we really are one district, one school. We've honed in on core instruction. That's evident in our PLC process that Ms. Miller just described. I don't think I need to repeat that, but if you all have questions, I'll be glad to answer that. We, that, we truly spent a lot of time at West working on that. The other big pieces are our climate and our culture, our environment. We continue to refine PBIS. We continue to work on the bullying prevention issue. Some folks may not realize that is a big deal at a school with third, fourth, fifth graders. Actually, it's a big deal. And it, nationally, there is even data that says our grade levels at our school are where it occurs the most. Kids are learning to explore words. They say things they might not really mean, but we have to take everything seriously, and we do, and we're working very hard on our processes that we use. And we do, and we're working very hard on our processes that we use to think about those comments that kids make. The other thing we want to do is we want kids to feel comfortable and supported at West. So we're excited about our community partners that have come on board with us. We'll be having a kickoff. I'm going to go ahead and use this to make sure the newspapers are invited to come join us next Monday afternoon at West Urban for our All-Bayous kickoff. And it is a bullying prevention program that we'll be working through with our community. Hopefully, you'll see those signs up at soccer fields, Kiwanis events, those types of things. Questions from the board? We're excited. Please come visit. It's a good place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
West is like a big jet airplane. They're headed down the runway and they're ready to take off. I'm telling you, they're right there. They're in the exact same place the middle school was in last year. So it is exciting what's going on there. And the one thing to tell you how far we've come as a district, when, when we started this journey together over three years ago, we did not even have systems in place. And then to hear a teacher leader come up here and talk about students now starting to take ownership of their own learning, that is amazing for us to be at that point because when you start getting there, that's when you're going to start seeing the real differences being made in our schools and with student data. So it's a very exciting time. Got the middle school, I guess our last report. So Ms. Williams is here, and I want you to note tonight, all of our principals, we, we've stayed right here because we are one school. We're one district. We're all together in this endeavor. And so we got Ms. Williams and Mr. Yoast with us.
First off, I would like to take this opportunity to thank our board, to thank our central office staff, and to thank our superintendent. You all have given us so much support. Anything that we have asked for that is to help our students, you have always put our student needs first. So I just want to tell you that I appreciate everything you all have done for our school systems. As Ms. Mullins had mentioned earlier, you've faced a lot of adversity and a lot of people that wanted to knock you all down at times. And I just want you to know that we support you and appreciate everything you have done for, for us. I would also like to take this time to thank my staff. I have a lot of staff members that came tonight. They wanted to show you their support for things you have done, but they also want to be here to celebrate our scores because we are super excited about the things that have gone on at the middle school. It has been a true cultural shift over the course of the last three years or so, and they deserve all the credit. They have worked extremely hard, so I'm glad to see them here and I'm glad to share with you the wonderful things that are going on. A lot of you have not met our assistant principal yet. This is Mr. Yoast. So I'm going to give him an opportunity to talk and then I will end the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome.
It's a pleasure to be before you all for the first time. I'm excited to meet you all and thank you for all of you and the leadership team that have spoken so far. It's been a pleasure working with you all so far this year. Thank you to our teachers as well for being here. The first part of the packet that we gave you all is the breakdown of every individual grade by subject area. You've got that for your reading. I'm going to skip to, for you all, it's the back of the fourth page, so I'm going to fly through some of this real quick. What I want to look at first is that three years ago, from the second I got into this district, everybody has talked about three years ago. So what I did is I said, let's look, our students that came to us three years ago at the end of fifth grade where their K-Prep scores were at versus the students that left us at the end of eighth grade last year, so they're, Mr. Winkler's freshmen this year. This is what happens over the course of three years at the middle school with a culture shift, with systematic changes that have occurred and the hard work put in by the teachers and leadership team. In reading, the students came to us, 31.3% of them were at a novice level. We reduced that by over 18% over the course of three years. The proficiency and distinguished numbers, we were at 44.1% when they got to us. By the time they left us last year, over two-thirds of the students were at a proficient or a distinguished level. That is due to the hard work of our teachers and students in the building. Math, you see a similar story. 23% were at novice, we reduced that to below 16. Under 30% were proficient or distinguished. That number was almost 50 by the time they left us at the end of eighth grade. For over the course of three years at the middle school, this is the type of success that our students are growing into. We wanted to show you all across the board, one of the things Ms. Williams talked about a little bit is we are a TSI school, as the others in the district are, for our special needs population, but we are seeing strides with those students at the same time. Novice reduction in reading, social studies, and on-demand writing. Growth in proficiency and distinguished from 2016, 17 to 2017, 18 in all tested areas. You can see the growth, double digits in reading and on-demand writing and improvements in math and social studies as well. From 2016 to 17 to 2017, 18, we reduced novice in all of our assessed areas. The reason science isn't on here is because the tests changed, so I couldn't give you a valid comparison from 2016, 17 to 2017, 18. But we reduced novice in all four of our assessed areas, and we saw major growth and gains in proficiency and distinguished for our students. In reading, nearly 60% of our students across the entire school are proficient and distinguished in reading last year. Over 60% in social studies. Novice reduction again, across the school, a three-year trend. What does it look like for our students? Because of the hard work our teachers and students have put in, we've reduced novice scores in our school in reading by almost 16% over three years. Math, over 6%, social studies over 6%, and on-demand writing over 13%. At the same time, our proficient and distinguished scores for three, over the last three years have gone up 15% in reading, 14% in on-demand writing, and 8% in math and social studies. One of the things I personally love to do is look at where do we stand compared to the schools around us. You'll notice that for the first time in recent history, we've actually passed two of the middle schools in Madison County, and we're ahead of all of our surrounding schools, Powell, Wolf, Owlsley, Lee, you name it, our proficiency scores have passed them up. But the reason I love this chart as well, and the reason our teachers, I think, love this chart, is it's not just who we've passed up, it's who we're going to pass up. We're not satisfied with where we are, we are continuing to go. I use a sports analogy to describe this. We won on Saturday, but Monday morning, we got to get back to it and we've got to keep winning. So we love that we came this far, but we've still got schools to pick off. Where are we at compared to the state? We want our students to have not just the best education we can provide in Estill County, we want to provide the best education possible for them across the state. So where are areas that we're now ahead of the state in terms of the state average? Our math proficiency and distinguished scores have surpassed the state average. For our free and reduced lunch populations, which are about 70% of our students, we're ahead of the state average in math and reading. Our special needs population, we're ahead of the state average in reading. Social studies as well, we're ahead of the state average. In terms of novice comparisons, we're below the state average in math, below the state average in math and reading for our free and reduced lunch populations. Science, we were actually below the state average in novice. We've got a lot of work to do in science and we know that, but we've already got the novice below the state level and we'll move the proficiency and distinguished forward as well as we keep getting better at that. Social studies are novices below as well. One thing I want to say before I turn it back over to Ms. Williams, I could go into individual test scores, but as Mr. Saylor alluded to at the beginning of the presentation, our seventh grade math teachers are both here, and I want to give them some serious props. When only 5% of your students at a grade level are novice in a subject area and over 60% of your students are proficient and distinguished, that is something to be tremendously proud of, and that is due in no short measure to the hard work they've put in. So I wanted to give them some serious kudos for that.
As Mr. Saylor and Ms. Reese have mentioned earlier, we are a TSI school. We are designated for our students with disabilities. You will see, though, that compared to the state, we are better than the state average as far as our novice, and we have moved our proficient and distinguished students there. So we're on that cusp. One thing that you will see is our growth score. Now, I'm going to get on a soapbox for a minute here and then I will come off of it very quick, but one thing I want you to understand when you look at our growth score is we have about 20 students in our building that we are penalized for their growth score because the way you look at the growth score is they may have predicted this student to be an apprentice low, and they were actually proficient, which is better than what they've predicted, which is where we want them. But we lost a half a point for that kid because the state has said, they have, they have predicted that they are not going to be able to sustain that proficiency. So they have penalized that student, they have penalized our school because they've already exceeded the growth that the state predicted. So when you look at that growth score, it's very deceiving in the fact that we didn't grow as much as we wanted to, but you've got to factor in, we've got about 20 kids that have exceeded what the state's predicted, but we're penalized for that. So I'm off my soapbox now, but don't let that be.
And that's 10 points.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's, it's a deceiving score. So we like to look at that trend data over the three years that shows the growth of those kids because for us, that's a more valid measurement of how these kids have truly grown when they've been in our building. Our science, our proficient and distinguished rating is not where we want it to be. This is our baseline data and we, now that we've seen the test, now that the kids have seen the test, we know things that we need to do to work on improving that. Our on-demand writing has made tremendous gains, but we still aren't where we want to be. So there are a lot of things, excuse me, that we are working on in our next steps to help with that. Our PLCs, it's as strong as any PLC you're going to see anywhere in the state. Our teachers have taken this process, they have bought into the idea that we are going to plan together, we are going to own this, we're going to look at our data, we're going to figure out where that part of core instruction is missing so we can fix it. So our PLC is a work of art, and I get so excited when I go into those PLCs. They focus on 80% mastery, and if those students, if 80% of our kids have not reached 80% mastery, those teachers are reteaching. They have a very fluid movement of their students, so you're going to see that one day, they may be in the classes that they are assigned, but after an assessment or after instruction and they haven't reached that mastery, they're moving kids. So Ms. Banks may have this group of kids, Ms. Beard may have this group of kids, and they are teaching based on whether they've reached the mastery and they're enriching them, or the kids haven't reached mastery and they're going to intervene and get them there. We have begun guided reading groups now in our sixth and seventh grade to help with our struggling readers. We have an in-school tutor that we were able to use our ESS funds for, and that in-school tutor works with intervention. We have purchased a new program called Simple Solutions, which is a supplementary math instruction. We have after-school tutoring that I am going to brag about my staff again. There is somebody every day in our building at each grade level that's staying after school free of charge. They're not getting paid, they're just giving their time to help those students because they know that with that one-on-one instruction, they're going to get them where they need to be. And then we also have a literacy coach, which the district has provided for us, that helps with that leveled reading. So those students that are the F and P, below those levels with their F and P testing, they are now looking at leveled text with them to get them where they need to be. So as all of the other principals have mentioned, we are not where we want to be yet, but boy, we're sure on a good path to get us there. And it's just a phenomenal place to work. It's a phenomenal building to be in. We have dedicated staff, we have students that are eager to be there, eager to learn. Just a lot of great things going on at the middle school, and I'm very thankful to be there. Any questions for you all?
Thank you all.
I'll just wrap it up real quick that a little over three years ago, about this, well, three years ago this month, we had a meeting upstairs in the old boardroom. And at that time, we were very much a district that really didn't know what our direction was. And they had a new person here telling them what the vision should be and where we were going. And you could tell then when you looked at school improvement plans, and I'll bring it back to what you've heard here tonight, you saw a lot of things in those school improvement plans. You saw things that pointed the finger at other schools because kids were not coming to them ready. You saw statements in school improvement plans that the unemployment rate in Estill County is 9%, that's why we can't be successful in our schools. You might as well said that there's stores that's boarded up and closed on Main Street, we can't be successful. Thing I'm proud of here tonight, you didn't hear one school or one principal make an excuse. We talked about leverage points, what we can do to change things, and that's a change in culture, and it started three years ago. And I tell you, I'm excited about what work the people that have done in our schools. This is not, this is not a result of one person, it's not the result of the central office. It's, it's a result of a team working together, focused on changing the culture of our school district, believing that all kids can be successful, and we're not there, but we're a heck of a lot closer today than we were three years ago. And we're going to be closer next year, and I'm proud of the fact that we now look in the mirror and examine what we're doing instead of looking out the window and trying to find somebody to blame. And that's a change in culture, and that's why we're sitting here today where we're at. And we're going to keep moving forward, and long after I'm gone, long after other people here in the central office are gone, we're creating teacher leaders in our schools that can step up and take the place. We had a leadership deficit in this district because there was not people poised to be principal to come in and take over schools and lead them in a positive manner. We no longer have that. We're getting ready, probably here in the next few weeks, we'll have some good news about national board certified teachers. We have teachers that will become national board certified. We had zero when I got here. Those are the things that we're doing. People that are in leadership programs, the Nissel program, the Principal Institute that our principals have attended. So we're building leadership capacity within this school district that's going to change how schools and how teachers and how students, how we teach, how we learn, how we move students forward. We're, we're changing that culture and it's going to have positive dividends for years ahead. And that's a testament to our teachers, our principals, our parents, our students for what they do each and every day. So I am proud of those results and I'm proud of the work that they've put in. And I believe you'll be sitting here next year with the same type of news, only better.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have facilities. First, we have a construction update, Estill Springs.
Estill Springs, of course Roland and Peter, I told them that we had a long night talking about test scores and there's not a lot of construction issues there, but I did want to just give you a slight update. We're right now at Estill Springs probably somewhere in the range of 80 to 85% complete. We do have a paint solution for the paint issue that we were having, and that is happening now. The KDE just recently approved your change orders for replacing all the VCT tile and doing the floor work within the kitchen. You're going to have a brand-new building here in about two months. It's just going to take a little bit of time. Momentum, as Jessica said, I have nothing but the highest regard for momentum construction, and Jason Walton, their CEO, you don't see the CEO of the construction company on the site like he is at this site. And so they have done a fantastic job for us. So that's the update on Estill Springs. And before you, you have pay application number four in the direct purchase order summary. It's in the amount of $309,328.70, and my recommendation to you all is that you approve that pay application.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? So next, we have the roof replacement project.
We do have representatives from Riddle Construction here today. If you all do have any questions for them, I spoke directly to Anthony Patrick today, who is the subcontractor on the roof project. I spoke directly to Anthony Patrick today, who is the subcontractor on the roof project. If you've been by there, you'll see that they have done quite a bit of work here over the last little bit. The metal is on top of the building, so it has finally arrived. They're at, almost to the point that, he told me today, that they will begin metal on Monday on the backside of the building. There is an issue that they sort of have to stay in front of the metalwork with the shingles so that they don't have the gravel and the bits of gravel from the shingles getting on the new roof. We don't want to scratch a brand-new roof up as it goes on. But over probably, what, about 12 days of work, they've probably replaced 40%.
About 50%.
Forty to 50% of the decking has already been replaced and so they're moving right now at a really great speed. Now, that's going to slow down. The 50% replacing or putting the foam insulation and getting the deck prepared, that's probably going to proceed rather quickly here because they have to stay in front of the metal. But what will take the time is doing all the trim work and everything on the metal as it goes on, making sure that all that's handled properly. But they've done a tremendous amount of work here in a little bit less than three weeks. So really excited about that progress and they have a pay application there. Do y'all have any questions for Riddle while they're here tonight? Anything you want?
Also, the gutters will be on black and really hopefully by Saturday, if they're permitted. We have to put all the gutters on before we can even start the metal replacement. So that's another step forward.
If we can get some, few good weeks of good weather, they're making some pretty good progress on that after delays with metal that was really crippling to that project. But my recommendation to you would be to approve pay application number three in the purchase order summary for the roof replacement project in the amount of $309,476.40.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving right along. We have the consideration and approval of change order number two, the downspouts.
As you know, our first change order was sort of a silly change order, but the company had an upcharge for choosing white as our trim color, which it's hard to believe that you get upcharged for white, but that just happened. As we got to moving forward and got to looking at the roof itself and the fact that you're going from a shingled roof to a metal roof, you're going to have a lot more water coming off that building at a lot faster pace. And because of that, the original downspouts and stuff, we felt like just wasn't large enough to carry that new amount of water. So we wanted to upgrade the downspouts to make sure that it could carry that new, that extra increase of water flow. You could probably say maybe it was a little oversight to begin with, but you know, at this project, we've already been delayed from the standpoint and we really felt like that this is something, and it's a value-added change order. If you're going to change the size of the downspouts, then it's going to actually take more materials to do that. And quite honestly, $2,600 for the entire building is not a huge amount in that change order. I always look at these change orders as something that you don't like to have to deal with unless you just have to, but I do believe this one is necessary in order for us not to have problems with gutters spilling up and spilling over the edge. So with that being said, my recommendation to you would be to go ahead and approve this change order in the amount of $2,640.40.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So next on the agenda, we have a bus garage update.
Just real quick for transparency reasons, as we move forward with the geotech on the property at the industrial park, we have run into a problem with the soils there in terms of being able to build a proper foundation for that building. And somebody would say, well, Carhartt is located there, why is Carhartt there? There's not a problem with Carhartt. If anybody knows anything about that industrial property site, Carhartt is sitting along sort of the top of a ridge that was part of that original property at the time. So that's why they were able to reach a more firm foundation, bedrock in other words, in order to be able to build that facility. As you know, Southeast Coal, they did a lot of coal processing out there and there was a lot of valleys and stuff that were filled during that process. Well, on that particular lot and quite frankly, on 85% of that property out there, it's got a lot of fill from that work. So the bottom line is, is that the board will have to discuss this a little further in executive session as we move into executive session at the end of the meeting. But more than likely, the industrial site is not a proper place for us to build a bus garage. It could cost us almost 50% of the total project cost just to put a foundation under that building. So we have run into a snag there, so we're going to have to discuss how we move forward with that. And of course, as you discussed, any type of land acquisition or any type of situation like that, that needs to be in closed session. But that is where we're at and I think everybody would be in agreement right now. I have stopped all plans on that, on that project because the estimated cost to build a proper foundation for that building is an additional $800,000. Could run anywhere to a million dollars. The entire project's 1.7. There is no way under the sun we can do that. I wouldn't recommend that in a million years. So we're going to have to back up and punt a little bit and think about the bus garage site. So that's basically an update there.
Okay, next we have the Estill Area Technology Center update.
For the area technology center, I was in a meeting on Monday with the Work Ready Skills Steering Committee and reaffirming the $5.7 million. Also discussing the fact that we do have legislative support for the operational funding of that facility. So as soon as I was through with that meeting, I returned to Lexington to meet with the architects. And as of right now, even though we've sort of put the bus garage project on hold, in order for us to be able to open the Career Tech Center in the fall of '20, we have to continue to move forward with that project. So as of right now, the timeline is, and I'll have an updated timeline for you all at the next meeting, but I can tell you right now, we're set to go to bid sometime in March on a site package to begin site preparation for the Career Technical Center. So again, anybody out there been wondering, well, what's happening to the Career Technical Center? Why is it delayed? There's been some political juggling in terms of operation funding and those types of things. We sort of got caught in a catch-22, if I could explain it to you guys and anybody that's listening, that the legislature is not going to fund operations for a building that is not complete. Because right now, we're in the middle of a budget cycle and this building won't be operational until the middle of the next budget cycle. Well, they're not going to approve money now and let it sit there for three years when they can be using that funding for something else. But on the other hand, KDE was telling us, well, we're not going to let you build the building until you have operational funding. So I mean, I've been playing political football with both groups, but there was a meeting that took place on October 4th with Senate leadership and the Commissioner of Education. And it's amazing after that meeting that on Monday, our two change orders at Estill Springs got approved with no questions. On Tuesday, I get an email from the Commissioner saying you will no longer have any roadblocks from KDE on building this building. Our job is to see that the building is built correctly and you guys can move forward. And yesterday, they approved the BG1, which has been sitting there for over two months for approval. So the roadblocks have been removed. So I do give credit to Senator Robinson and Senator Stivers for their work on this. And you should see ground break on that Career Tech Center within the next six months. So that, that is going to become a reality. After all these years of wanting an area technology center, it's going to happen and it is going to be a tremendous benefit for the students of Estill and Powell County as that building is completed and those programs are open. So that's your update on the Career Technical Center.
Thank you. Next we have our consent items.
Under consent, there is really nothing that we need to pull out of there unless you all have questions about that. We did have a couple of things on there as our out-of-district contracts with our local school districts for student exchange. And we did add two different out-of-state field trips for the middle school, one for the eighth grade class, one for the student council. But if you all don't have any questions concerning any of those items.
I've got a question about one, please. On the Chromebook cases, Jeremy, do we, is there any chance we're ever going to have any use for those?
Us as a district, no. They were part of a purchase of some netbooks that we got six or seven years ago. It's in a classroom setting. So they've been sitting in storage for probably at least the last 40 years and we thought this was a great opportunity to provide a low-cost case for any of our students that have them that we give them the Chromebooks to.
Okay.
That might be a little bit of action protection, so it's a great opportunity for us to allow them to buy a low-cost case. Normally it costs you 50, 60 bucks per case. We can just sell it to them for $10, they get the case and it gets them out of the shop.
Okay, thank you.
In order as for Salamo, we've got a surplus.
I had a couple of questions about some of the out-of-state trips. I'd gotten several phone calls concerning a middle school trip to Chicago that is a little bit different than what we usually do for an eighth grade trip.
Yes, I think in the past, and both of them are here, if one of them wants to speak to it, I think in the past, they have went to Gatlinburg or Pigeon Forge for that trip. And I got this, this week, so I don't know, Andrew, if you want to speak to that.
The place that we typically go and stay is not going to be an option. It was going to be much more expensive to go to that water park. So as a replacement, we were going to have to go to a hotel that had an outdoor swimming pool that was going to give them that opportunity. Well, we're going in April, so who knows whether or not they could swim in the outdoor swimming pool or not. For approximately $100 more, we could get them to Chicago, which is going to allow them to go to the field, or the Chet Aquarium. They're going to get to go to, you all help me in the back, they're going to get to go to the zoo rather, the Playboy Theater. And the biggest thing is they're going to get to see Hamilton, you know, Broadway play that has not been, we haven't been available or able to get tickets since it's been out. So they're going to get to go see Hamilton.
So is it fair to say that we're going from a non-educational eighth grade trip to a very educational?
It's fair to say that. And social studies, social studies is assessed in the eighth grade, so it is fantastic for the social studies that they're going to get from.
I'm all for it.
Thank you.
I just had some phone calls about it and I just wanted to make sure that we made an explanation to the public about the change and exactly what was going on with that. And I wasn't able to answer any questions because I didn't know that it was going to be on the board meeting tonight, so.
Yeah, it was late arrival.
Yeah, it was late arrival, so.
It was.
And honestly, the trip is later in the spring, if there was any further questions, but we just felt like while we still had these out-of-state trips on here, we did have to approve the one to Washington DC for the student council, which is a trip that they've taken in the past. And they need to be able to purchase airline tickets for that one in order to be able to save money on those. So I just want to ahead and add it both.
The other question that I had about that trip, there was some concern about the cost. I was wondering, is there any one available to help students that really want to go that maybe can't completely fund the price?
We have multiple fundraisers that are being planned already. One will actually start next week.
That was another.
Actually, three of them will be next week.
That was another question that I had gotten from people.
There will be fundraisers. And we are having a parent meeting on Monday and a parent meeting on Wednesday to answer those questions for parents. But we had to wait before, to see if you all would approve it before we had those parent meetings.
I know the high school has sponsors that sponsor students for the senior trip. Is that an option for middle school for the eighth grade too?
Just a note, I went to Chicago this year for the first time ever. You know, so it took me 55 years to get there. It's a wonderful opportunity for our kids, as long as we're able to help provide fundraising opportunities for them to go, that I'm always believe if you work hard, you can pay for your way. And I believe in being able to work hard and raise the money. And if you can work hard and raise the money, then they've got the opportunity to do that. I think it's a great opportunity for them. If they, if they're going to get to see Hamilton, I was fortunate enough to see that last fall. That is an absolutely unreal performance and you're talking about something our kids have never seen anything on that level before. That will be an unreal opportunity for them to be able to see that, that program. So good change if they can afford it.
Thank you for answering that.
Any other, if there's not any other questions, then my recommendation is to approve those consent items.
Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have public comments. And I know we have a lot of parents here and I'm not sure how many actually want to speak, but we want to make sure we give an opportunity for everybody that wants to speak. So just depending, if we have everybody that wants to speak, we will limit it to five minutes each. If not, if we only have one or two, I mean, we can open that up. So if someone wants to speak, come forward to the podium.
I've attended a few of these meetings. Was here last time and we didn't get a chance to discuss anything. First of all, I want to congratulate you guys on these numbers that you've presented tonight. It makes me proud. I also want to congratulate the hard work of the police department, the state police, and the investigation that happened regarding the threats that our school received and that fast action of getting that taken care of. And I hate to take away from everybody's happy demeanor for all these good numbers and stuff, but I do have some very tough questions that I would like to be addressed. The school threats that we received alarmed me and luckily that's, they did get the individuals responsible. But there were a lot of things that happened that I don't think were handled properly and I just want to address those with you. The notification process was handled poorly, in my opinion. The Facebook post and a one call the first time, and then a Facebook post and one call several, a long time after that. My kids were already home when I got the one call. The lockdown procedures seem to be different from each building. And being able to secure 2,500, give or take, students in five different buildings in 20 minutes seems near impossible to me. Who actually went and checked the buildings? Who actually went and checked the buildings? Can anyone answer that question?
The principals and the administrative staff at each school.
Did they, did you walk outside and check the grounds?
Based on the call that was made.
It was nonspecific, I know that.
It was nonspecific, but it was specific as to what was occurring at the time. So, those principals, and I've said it before, if it had been a different type of threat that was even more nonspecific than what we got, it would have taken minutes, if not hours, to secure that building. But based on the threat that we received, it was very possible for the administrative staff to check that building.
Because it came in as there's a school shooting, correct?
There's a shooting basically in progress, yes.
Yes.
So, that was easy to check. And yes, we do check the outside of the building as long, as well as the inside of the building.
So, the perimeters of the building, the back parking lot, the wood line, the nature trail?
We, we do not go on the nature trail. We do not go into the wood line. We do not do those things.
And what would have happened had one of your administrators encountered that assailant? Say there, was somebody actually there? I know that you guys have taken active shooter training. I know that. But that doesn't mean that in the event that that were to happen, that you would react.
We would have had to call law enforcement and had waited for law enforcement to respond.
Okay. So, I do not doubt, and I'm going to get back to this here. So, to send to teachers, janitors, principals, school staff out into the hallway, to me, seems a little reckless, that aren't trained. The only thing that they are armed with is common sense techniques and the fight-or-flight mentality, you know? What happens if they did encounter an assailant? Who then is going to let the rest of the school notify? How then are they going to stop that assailant unarmed? I mean, with, you know, they're not trained. And I know that the SRO program is up in the air right now. I know that. We're struggling because we're a small community and there's not a lot of law enforcement that's available to jump in there and, you know, get on board there. I get that. But, police officers do what they do because they have trained hours, days, weeks, months, and years on end to be able to face these situations cautiously and with tactical maneuvers to contain that subject. They have radios to alert others of a location and a duty belt full of lethal and non-lethal tools to take down an assailant. They go through rigorous training to develop an ability to handle the most stressful situations with a calm mind. And everyday folks like you and I would more than likely panic, much like the panic that ensued over the two threats with all the parents in the community a month ago. I have a responsibility as a parent to question anything that I disagree with when it comes to the safety and security of my kids. And I know that the teachers and administrators are going to do absolutely anything and everything in their power to protect my kids. But we desperately need that SRO program. I had done research for two and a half weeks on how to get a school-based police department. However, laws have changed within the last two weeks through DOCJT. And now, you cannot be a school law enforcement. I mean, it's not considered a police department unless you're commissioned by the state plus to go through DOCJT, which makes it extensive. But with the current negotiations of IPD for an SRO, and we haven't had one since September 21st, we're in short supply to accommodate that need. And Ravenna declined to renew the contract simply because of manpower. But on September 24th, I talked to you on the phone, Mr. Saylor. And you stated that there were three options being explored. Do you care to divulge what three options?
One of those was exploring the city of Irving to enter into an agreement with us for an SRO. I can now say that as of a week ago, right before fall break, that the city of Irving informed us that they could not financially support that program and has withdrawn. The other one was to speak to the city of Ravenna. Also, their issue is, just like you said in your own statement a minute ago, that they do not have the staff. They have one officer in their entire police department.
Right.
He reports at 4:00 every afternoon. So, they do not have the manpower. And it's not just as simple as going out and hiring somebody. Then they've got to be able to go through the training that's required by the state.
Right, it takes about a year to get off.
Plus the SRO training. So, they don't have an officer that's available. The third option is for us to create our own police department, which is an option that we are exploring. We've been in contact with some different people in terms of doing that. I don't think I'm breaking confidentiality to tell you that one of the reasons we're going into exec session tonight is talk about personnel and dealing with the possibility of beginning our own police department. So.
You're going to run into some roadblocks there according to DOCJT. And Woodford County Schools just, I actually spoke with Garrett Wells. I've been on the phone. I've done my research. I've done my homework. I've spent a lot of hours on the phone. Garrett Wells with Woodford County Public Schools did just, they did create a police force. However, a week and a half ago, DOCJT sent them a letter stating that it was null and void at this point. They cannot operate as of this time because they have to be commissioned by the state, which is a two-month process. On top of that, they began all of that back in April. That was actually one of my big speaking points. And then when I spoke to DOCJT, I said, "Well, that's not going to work."
Yeah, we started back in April as well, so you'll know looking into this. It's not a short-term process.
No, it's not.
In order to do it.
And I asked them, I said, "Is there any way we can fast-track this? What is the?" And she said, "Well, it's been a terrible ordeal."
We've been speaking to our neighbors right next door, pretty much, which is Montgomery County. And they, they do have a SLEO program, which they're commonly called.
SLEOs, yes.
So, we've been in conversations with them.
SLEOs have to be certified police officers?
Mm-hmm.
And they also have to go through training and they have to be commissioned? And it has to be done every other year?
And you're 100%.
I've also been in contact with Kentucky Center of Safe Schools. I know that in fiscal year 2017, we were given $40,878. In fiscal year 18, it was $40,121. And for this current year, $47,535. I know that IPD had requested $48,000 to cover an officer.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that with this Safe School funds, it can go to a plethora of different things. It could be something as simple as rekeying an entry because someone lost their keys. It could be rekeying the whole building. I know that it can go to that safety. It can go to be paying for the Safe School Coordinator's salary. It can go to tons of different areas. But have we been allocating that money for the SRO program?
That money has been used to pay for the SRO program in the past. It's also been used to pay for facility improvements.
Doesn't the nickel tax cover that?
Such as the tenting of, nickel tax pays for things that's within your facility plan.
Facility upgrades or safety and security, would the nickel tax not cover that?
It's got to be within your facility plan. That's part of the red tape that I've been encountering on the construction projects. Because of the way the facility plan is written, it hinders you on how to do some things. So, for instance, when we tent the windows at the middle school cafeteria area so that an assailant could not stand outside the cafeteria and see who's in that area, that is something that would, you would spend Safe Schools money on. It's also paid for staffing at the alternative school.
Correct.
In the past. What the request is, or what caused the negotiations to break down with Urban PD is that they requested for us to pay the entire salary for an officer to be full-time. The problem with that being is that the school district cannot pay for services that are not rendered. So, the school district only needs an SRO for a period of time. Full-time employs 261 days. So, we cannot pay the salary of an officer while they're working for Urban PD during the summer. That is an absolute impossibility. That would get our board in trouble and myself in terms of misappropriation of funds.
With their sick time and vacation leave, though, that would take up 12, it's, they get a sick day and a vacation day every month. So, that's 24 days.
They, they get a, they get a sick day per month. They don't get a vacation day per month. They have a limited number of vacation days that they receive by board policy. It is close to, I think it's probably more or less 22 days.
And then you have holiday pay, or you have holidays and you have.
It's part of their contract, but it doesn't.
I mean, when you add all that up together, it cuts into a lot of it. And that's neither here nor there.
Three-fourths of it.
I mean, there was $48,000 and we're at $47,535. And that's all I was asking, you know? Can you not find the other $500 to come to do?
That's not that simple. We can, we can actually pay for about 75% of that officer because that's how much the officer would be working with us. We cannot pay the other 25%.
Okay.
It's not legal for us to do so.
Well, Powell County has two SROs and is getting ready to hire another one through general funding. They're working on their third one. I've been on the phone with Powell County. And they're on about the same economical level as we are as a county and have about the same amount of students. I mean, so for us to be absolutely. They're through the sheriff's office, yes.
Those are through the sheriff's office, that's correct.
I am well, and I, and they did receive $47,782 in Safe School funds. That's public record, it's online. But for the, you know, we were just, the last board meeting, you were talking about advertising for a CMA, which is important at $13.92 an hour. I was here for, I think it was $13 and some change anyway. Both jobs are very important, you know? But at $14 an hour, you know, you're looking at less than $48,000 for an officer. You know, if you all could come to an agreement, that's going to have to be between you and that department.
I hope for them the max amount that we were allowed to under law.
And for them to cover, you know, the benefits package is a problem. A cruiser can be donated. Almost every cruiser in this county has been donated from somebody along the way. Every department has received donated cruisers. So, I just, I just can't understand why we can't come together there. I mean, I just can't on that one. And I know it's going to take time. We don't have manpower. We don't have any retired officers that are stepping up saying, "I'll take the job. I'd love to get back into it." I realize that.
Yeah, it's an issue.
Finding the person is an issue.
Yes.
But my second concern was the lockdown procedures. My kids came home and they talk, they talk, they talked about this lockdown procedure during this threat, that they were on green or they were on, you know, yellow. If it, and if the words were involved with the school, why were they not on red? And if they're on green, then why are they allowed to roam the hallways? You know, I mean, why, why is this? That was another concern of mine. You know, how come my middle schooler, his teacher said, "I'm not letting them out in the hallway," but my high schooler had no idea anything was even going on? You know? The lockdown procedures were totally different, you know? And it was very concerning to me. It's very concerning to me. Even as a precaution, why wasn't law enforcement out here to respond on the second one?
You would have to ask law enforcement.
I have, and I was told that you all declined law enforcement for the second round.
I never declined anything. I said, "We will check our buildings. We will begin checking our buildings." You have to understand, okay, that happened at 2:00 in the day. There's one law enforcement officer.
It happened at 2:55.
Yeah. There's one law enforcement officer.
2:55 and at 3:20, you decided it was okay.
We checked our buildings and we lifted the lockdown, that's correct.
For my children to be released out into the parking lot.
We checked our buildings based on the information we had and we released them, yes.
It's.
You didn't care?
I don't, I had, I mean, I do have a problem. I think a lot of parents have a problem with that.
You know, we have to try to make the best decisions we know based on the information that we had. If we had believed that our kids were in danger, we would not have been releasing.
At 9:00 PM that night, it was determined that that phone call came from the back parking lot of the high school.
Well, first of all, it didn't come from the back parking lot, so your information is incorrect.
Or along the wood line, in the area of the back of the high school.
That's incorrect as well.
Okay. Okay. Well.
We have people that are leaking information from different places. That is not correct. You know, I'm not at liberty to discuss what evidence we have in those cases.
Oh, no, it's still under, you know, they haven't even been to court or what have you yet. And you can't discuss that at all anyway, and they're juveniles.
Yeah, well, they have been back in court and they have been, they're back in juvenile detention as we speak. But a lot of the information that's floating around out there is just not true, okay?
And that goes back to notifying the parents, you know?
And we tell parents what we legally can.
And giving us all.
The information is spoken that there is the truth.
Ma'am, you'll have your turn, okay?
Anyway, I do have, I do have something to offer. Not just my opinion, but I do have something to offer. I have went around to all the local fire departments and gathered old fire hose. I don't know if you've seen the sleeves that can be made out of a fire, old fire hose. It's about six-inch sleeve that you can actually slide over like that locking mechanism at the top of that door, which would secure the door even more. I have approximately 200, I can make about 200 of those sleeves with the materials I have right now, if you all would be interested in. Having those to add an extra security to the door, it does make it to where, you're welcome to Google it, look it up on YouTube, you know, there, there are videos. There was a whole movement by a fire department and police department, I think it was in Kansas, and they made a whole slew of those and gave them out to the local schools. It was a great idea, a great initiative. I do have that material. I do have that available. If you're interested in that, I can get those to you guys.
We would have to check with the local fire marshal and see if that is something that can be done because we have a lot stricter codes. Some states have stricter codes than others. We have been in, we have been in meetings that deals with facilities and facilities improvement and different mechanisms by which you can lock doors. There, there are issues with doors being able to be locked and when, there's just different issues. It's not as simple as that. I mean, if that is something that would work, sure, we would consider it. It would be something, oh, that the local fire marshal or the state.
I can make that call tomorrow.
Have to approve. You know, we, we've got plenty of staff. We can make calls just as well.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, making that call.
It's a matter of, it's a matter of what's involved in that, what it takes to do that. I'm not against doing anything that would make our schools safer, but we do have to stay within state building codes and within the fire codes.
I understand that. I understand that. I also know that there is the Safe School Conference that's held every year in June. Do you all attend that Safe School Conference in June in Louisville?
We've had people that attended the Safe Schools Conference. Not every time does someone attend. We have a training next week that's part of our School Plant Management Conference that deals with school safety as well. The Superintendent's Conference that comes up the first, second weekend of December. The first night is dedicated to school safety and John Akers from the Kentucky Center for School Safety will be there. So, there's several different trainings that are available for school personnel that we send different people to. Mr. Arthur is our safety director right now. He's been in several different trainings.
Have you attended the Safe School Conference in Louisville?
Before?
Yeah.
Yes, but not in the last year.
The other thing that a lot of people.
I mean, there's a change in world.
There's a lot of things that, there's a lot of information that we do not share. We do not share what our emergency plans are, what our safety plans are because of the fact there's information in there that people can use against us if they know what that information is.
Well, you emailed me saying that the school was safer six months ago, or safer now than it was six months ago. And I don't see how that's possible without an SRO at this point, without, I mean, we have, we did get rid of a teacher that posed a threat to some young girls. Was that why we're safer? I mean, we don't have an SRO. Was that why we're safer? I mean, we don't have an SRO. I had some hard questions asked, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
Well, the trainings that we've had since the incident that happened at Marshall County and that happened in Parkland, Florida. The trainings that our staff has went through, like I said, that before the last board meeting, before you all arrived, we had almost fifty staff members that was trained in how to react during a school shooting and what to do in terms of taking care of students if a student was to be injured in that situation.
Did we ever get those medical, the trauma kits?
Yes.
For the, the school that we discussed back in February?
The things that, the things that, that you all talked about at that safety meeting, we have implemented over ninety percent of them. We don't go out here and advertise it. We don't go out here and talk about what we've done because, again, somebody that was bent on doing something can use that information against our staff and against our kids.
Oh, I know that, and I appreciate the confidentiality of that.
We don't, we don't advertise those things.
But to say that added security measures, you know, we've talked on the phone a few times.
Losing the SRO is a blow. There's no doubt. But, you know, our hands are also tied. You know, we've been talking about a SLEO program since April, so we know that there are changes that have occurred.
Just recent, just recent, within the last two weeks.
But those were also on the horizon back in the spring as well, as we talked about this. And again, you, you have to find the right person, uh, in that particular case because a lot of school districts have started trying to use retired state troopers and people along that line. We have talked to some of those individuals, and, uh, we're trying to do that. We're just not in the position right now with our local law enforcement because of budgetary concerns at both the city of Reven and the city of Irvin. And believe me, they, they want to do everything possible. There's not a doubt in my mind that Mayor Tipton and Mayor Gross would want to do what's best for our kids, but there are budgetary limitations. That's right. I can, listen, if it came down to it, we, we pay what we needed to pay. The issue is we have to be able to pay within a reasonable thing. Again, we have a duty to pay what is reasonable, and also that we can't pay for services not rendered. And it's, I don't want to wait, but I think, you know, with a new sheriff, if you notice that most SRO programs go through the local sheriff's department.
I spoke with one of the potential candidates, or one of the candidates of Sheriff's Race, actually, today.
I spoke to both of them.
He, um, was discussing the SRO program and maybe bringing the DARE program back. Why do we not have DARE? Why do we not have these educational programs we had all these times? I mean, there's a lot of questions I have, which could go on for days, and I'm not gonna keep you guys any longer.
Well, the DARE program, just so you'll know, the DARE program is community-supported, so it's one of those things that when, if somebody loses focus out in the community, you know, it, it doesn't happen. And of course, it, the DARE program is a good program. There's no doubt. It's a good program. Why there's not been a focus on DARE in this county? I can't say it wasn't when I got here, and again, that's one thing I've not done anything to. And we'll take a note here, and we can check in to Ms. Isaacs, if you don't care. We can check in to where we're at with the DARE program, uh, and those types of things. But I've spoken to both sheriff's candidates. I don't endorse anybody politically. Both candidates have said that they are very interested in reinstituting the SRO program through the county sheriff. If you look at most school districts, unless they're a city school district...
Sheriff's Department, isn't it?
The sheriff's department is the one that's responsible, and both of them have been very, uh, positive about offering that program and providing us the, we've got need, we've got other safety needs other than just an SRO. And quite honestly, one SRO for our district is probably not enough.
No, I would love to see one in each building, but that's not gonna happen.
Again, that's a funding issue that not, but I think it's possible that with the sheriff's department and with funding through the county and through the school system, I think it's possible we could have two.
Even with the change in the sheriff's office, though, even with, and they hire new, they hire new right off the street. You're looking at a year before they are gonna be back on, available to take calls or even to be able to do anything because you've got twenty-two weeks of academy training along with, uh, FTO.
You're exactly right. No, I know you're right.
I'm married to an officer. I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah. No, you're exactly right, and I mean...
And I didn't come in here with, you know, an empty, you know, we're just talking. I've done my homework.
I, I didn't take it that way. You know, the, the bottom line is, is that I'm able to sit down. I'll, I'll sit down and talk to anybody in a, in a manner that's like this right here. I'm not gonna sit and listen to yelling and screaming. I'm not gonna do that.
And I haven't done that yet.
I don't expect that out of nobody, and I'm not gonna treat anybody else like that. And I am going to defend this school system. We're doing a lot of good things. This board is doing a lot of good things, and I'll defend this school system whenever that happens. But, uh, you know, right now, there is, there is not a good option for SRO.
No, I know that. You're looking at time.
But we're, we're gonna discuss it tonight in executive session on how we can move forward at a quicker pace, but you're right. Not having an SRO is a blow for school safety in our school district, but I will say...
So in the comment of events, I first, then six months ago.
In terms of the training that our staff has and the emergency plans that we now have in place and the things that we have worked out within our school system, we are more prepared today than we were before the shooting at Marshall County High School. I can't speak for how quick it's gonna take for law enforcement to get to one of our schools because, as I said, at any point in time...
You don't know that. I mean, nobody knows that.
I, I don't know that because we usually have during the day maybe one or two officers that's, um, on duty in this entire county. Hopefully, that will change with time. But listen, I, I have, I have faith in emergency management. I mean, Ronnie and I have been on the phone today. We've got a training. We have teachers at three of our schools that's gonna come in on Election Day and have training on school safety. That was planned for the Monday before Election Day that was supposed to be a staff work day, but now our teachers have agreed to come in on Election Day and do that, and Ronnie has agreed to provide that training. So those are things that developed, and that meeting that you talked about, that, there was a thirty-sixty-ninety-day plan developed from that meeting in terms of suggestions that came from this community on things that we could do to make things safer. About ninety percent of those have been implemented.
Well, that's wonderful.
And I will say that communication on the first day was not good. I had never used OneCall before. And the reason why I don't use OneCall, just like you said, you got a phone call at nine o'clock at night, and that's the way OneCall is. OneCall is not...
No, I got the phone call at four fifteen after my kids had already arrived home.
I thought you said nine.
No, at nine is whenever I said the phone came.
But even at four fifteen, that's after the fact. It's over with. But that's one call.
Well, we talked about back in the spring, getting like the RAVE program, which is a, a, uh, I told you when I worked at E K U Police, they use RAVE over there. They use that RAVE notification system.
We have, we have that system that it's on the way right now.
That, you make like phone calls, emails, text messages, any network computer in, that is networked into the school period, you know, on E K U campus, it goes to those if you select it. It goes out on Twitter, Facebook, everything. It's, and it happens like that. I've operated that system.
Yeah, that program is, uh, it's not the RAVE program that we are in the process. It's totally free. It's a free program for school districts that, uh, Mr. Simpson?
Alert us.
Alert us is the program, and it is, it has been already, uh, processed and on the way to the district. We have started using the Remind app for emergency personnel within our school system so that they're gonna get that notice before that program even goes in.
I also have that app downloaded on my phone. Uh, it's got the star on it, School Point or something like that.
Yeah, there's different, and if you've got School Point, as soon as we make a posting...
Okay.
As soon as we make a posting to our website, then you get that notification on School Point as well.
Yeah.
So there are different ways to notify.
That definitely needs to be addressed. It does need to be, if it hasn't already.
Yeah, it's not instantaneous, but we started using OneCall and...
A direct protocol for every incident.
Yeah. Up until the last time, we'd never used OneCall during a school threat. We did use it that last time, and it is frustrating because the event's over. It's that, whenever you place a OneCall, it can take up to three hours for that call to be generated through thirty-two-hundred numbers that's in the system.
What? I mean, forgive me, but I worked at Dispatch for nine years, right here, and at one time, we had a callback feature that took forever to go through because it would call three phones at a time and then hang up and go to the next one. And that cycle took forever. Uh, but then they upgraded to this other, they have another, um, and I can't remember, Everbridge. I now use Everbridge to notify. Those phone calls go out just like that. It's all voice-over-I P. It's all, I mean, it's gone. Everybody's notified, and it tells you who was notified, who answered, who didn't. It's all on the computer. Maybe check into that. It's called Everbridge. That's a mass notification system.
So you'll know right now that our system was an analog system. We've spent, talking about spending money, we've spent almost a hundred thousand dollars as a purchase orders that was approved this morning to go voice-over-I P in all of our schools, which is gonna allow for a quicker notification system.
Okay.
We've spent money on security camera systems that are being upgraded.
Which was some of the discussion back in February.
Some of them are the old analog VCR systems that now will be a system in each of our schools that I can sit in my office and look at the security cameras if I want to. So we're, we're spending money. We're not sitting on money. We're spending money to upgrade communications, to upgrade security camera systems. Right now, we have a big glaring weakness. We need an SRO, but we're gonna have to work within the confines. There is more to it than the school system. I mean, we offered, we offered the max amount of money we could offer based on that officer being employed by us and working in our school system, so...
So you're saying about the other hundred days or so, the hundred, hundred fifteen days or something?
It's probably closer to eighty, seventy to eighty days. It's about twenty-five percent.
That they would be road officers?
Well...
And they wouldn't be because they have vacation time and the comp time, and if they're working ballgames and they're doing these things.
Well, some of the vacation time's taken like during Christmas break, Thanksgiving break, so some of that vacation time, not all of it falls to the city or the sheriff's department to take all that vacation time. It works out to where it's about, uh, really, if you get right down to it, probably about a seventy percent, thirty percent. That officer spends seventy percent of their time in the school system, about thirty percent working for the city during Christmas break or during the summer. There's training involved there and...
They have forty hours. They have to participate every...
Yeah, so, um, we can legally pay for the seventy percent. That's what we're allowed to pay for. We're not allowed to pay for the other part of that, so...
Well, that explanation does help a whole lot on trying to clear the air on that one because at forty-eight thousand and your budget, I mean, you're allotted forty-seven thousand, and it says, "Nope," you know? The public doesn't know what the public doesn't know. And what's not put out there.
There's a lot of red tape.
But when there's stuff put out there and there's no clarification on anything, that's when you get the rumor mills. That's when you get a lot of startup emotions. You know, I did, my concerns were some of the safety measures, the way the protocols were followed with this last one. If this child, say they, they called in a false threat just to get them to go outside, you know, to cancel it, then they are out there just waiting. And our kids just ran out into the parking lot to get in their cars, you know? How did we know that, 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 that the wood line was cleared? How did we know? You know, that's a, that's a real fear of mine, mine, as a parent. I don't know if somebody's gonna be laying in wait. Columbine happened because they only had one protocol in place. They only had one evacuation route in place, and that child knew that evacuation route, and they all went through the cafeteria, and they were waiting on them on the outside. We need to implement, if we haven't, and we may have, and that's fine, if we have, you don't even have to say anything, but we need to implement like Plan A, B, C, or D, where that, you know, you change it up. You throw, you know, the kids need to know those routes. The administration, nine-one-one needs copies of all the blueprints of these buildings. The fire department needs copies of blueprints of all these buildings.
They have them.
Nine-one-one doesn't.
I don't know why they don't.
Well, then, we'll talk to Ronnie tomorrow or whenever you talk to him, 'cause they don't. Dispatchers do not, and that's the first person you're gonna get a hold of. When you call that phone, it's gonna be somebody like me, although I have since left Dispatch.
We appreciate, we appreciate your concerns, and as, as the chairman of the board, and I don't wanna speak for these other three, but, and especially, more importantly, as a parent, we have the same concerns you all do. We all have children in the schools and trust them. That day, I panicked too. I mean, that's a normal human response, especially as a parent. And the first thing I wanted to do was, "Are my kids okay?" And I, we get that, and I want you to understand that.
Oh, I don't doubt that you guys, none of you all in this room, do not appreciate our children and lay down our life work.
Yes, absolutely. And that is our priority as a board.
I don't doubt that.
Even though it's been said that it's not, it is. We all have children, and we've all discussed it. And please know that we take, if a parent's concerned serious, and we are working, but we can't always share that. And another thing that we would ask as a board is, don't fill in the blanks. Call us and ask us. If we can share with you guys, we will. If we can't, we will share with you that we can't. But this last time, people were filling in the blanks and pointing fingers, and that's where all the rumors came from, that were not true.
Right. Now, Facebook absolutely filled it, but...
And so, I mean, I, I welcome any parent to call me.
The notification was on Facebook in some people's defense, so it was a Facebook attack on both sides.
And I will tell you, as parents, we all discussed that after that first one, why there wasn't enough. We all had the same exact concerns you guys had.
And we, as parents, have to make sure our phone numbers are updated. I mean, we do. I can't grope that I didn't get the phone call if I didn't update my phone number.
Yeah, I had a parent that complained that they did not receive the phone call. When we went back into the system and saw why they didn't receive the phone call, they opted out of it because at the end of every call...
I mean, I get phone calls for Kona Ice four times a week.
Press one to opt out. They'd opted out. So, I mean, yes, there's gonna be phone calls about Kona Ice. There's gonna be phone calls about, "We have a big ballgame tonight."
A C T prep. I got that today.
ACT prep. There's all those other things.
Which is great. But then not to get a phone call whenever there was a threat against my child's safety and well-being really bothered me. And I think it bothered you all enough that you did send it out the second time, even if it was like there was some information put out by the board, by...
Yeah, I had parents that called me and expressed that concern. I said, "You know, I've never done it before, but I will next time." And as everybody knows, the next time it happened, the call went out. There wasn't sometimes a lot of happy people because it was an hour late, an hour and fifteen minutes late, those types of things, but the phone call went out. Uh, so we are exploring options to have a quicker notification, and we'll, we'll continue to, uh, make improvements with technology. I mean, technology's new and, um, there's a lot of new things out there on the market. Some of them good, some of them bad. You got people out there trying to sell things that don't work. So you've got to make sure that you're not throwing good money to bad. But, uh, our major issue right now, one of our major issues is trying to find an SRO or be able to find a way that we can obtain an SRO, and, uh, we're continuing to work on that every day.
Well, and I'd like to say something. I do appreciate the one call the second time. I know it takes longer. But I was one of the parents that called you and complained because, like Rhonda said, we're all parents up here and we're concerned, but I do wanna thank you for coming and bringing some good information and being organized and, and not just fussing at us. I mean, but actually, this is constructive, and you gave us some good ideas and something to think about, and, and I do appreciate you doing your homework.
If you'll notice, Ms. Isaacs is taking notes the entire time. We will evaluate the things we're talking about.
This is the kind of help we need from the public.
This right here is helping...
It's very constructive.
But spreading false information and things that are not true is not helpful. It doesn't go anywhere, and we can't get anything done when we're doing that.
And that's, I mean, that's what I, I've always been taught, and I'm trying to raise my children. If you have a problem, do not bring me, I mean, sometimes we don't have the answers to all the problems, and you bring it to somebody's attention that might have a solution. And that's why I brought some of this stuff to you guys, because you may not have looked at it from this angle. Maybe you have, maybe you haven't. I don't know. But, um, input in the safety and well-being of all of our children in this school system is extremely important, not just to me, for my kids, my blood children, but for my kids' friends that I've been a big part of. friends that I've been a big part of their life, their teammates, their, you know, cousins, family. This whole, you know, this is a small community, and we have to come together as a community. We have to do better all the way around. There's always room for improvement. And if I come up here just griping and not saying anything worth, and just yelling, then there would be no, no room for improvement there. You all wouldn't take me serious, and I'd be shooed off, and there would be nothing, nothing to come of this.
That's why we had the email exchange after the meeting the other night.
That is exactly why. I didn't publicize-
Because we've always been able to talk, and I'll continue to do that. If you afford me the information about the fire hose stuff, we'll be glad to check and see.
I have, no, I'm not in that car. I have it in my trunk.
But get that information to me. We'll be glad to check it.
I don't care a bit to call the fire marshal. I get the phone numbers easily and find out, is there a school code against this if I do this for the school? As a gift, as a, as a help to the community, because my kids are there, you know, as an added safety measure. That's what it is. It would slide over, have you seen the video?
No.
Have you, has any, have you?
Not yet.
Okay, so it would slide over that, that lock-in mechanism at the very top, and you cannot pull it open unless it's somehow, the material is somehow torn or what, you know?
And just realize, and I hope everybody knows this, that things that can take place in the private sector or in your homes or in businesses can't necessarily happen in school systems or in classrooms or in schools because we're, we're under a lot different when you're dealing with public money, public trust, those types of things. We have to operate under different procedures, and that's hard to believe. You know, there might be some company that would go to the industrial park and go ahead and build a building on that lot and not worry about it and hope nothing happens. I don't have that luxury.
So did we procure that land already? Had you already purchased that land?
There was no purchase of that land. It was donated.
Was it donated? Well, that's good.
So, the, yeah, well, we would have never purchased it unless we have the Geotech on it to begin with. But the bottom line is, is that there are just some things when you're dealing with public money, public funds, those types of things, you just don't have the luxury to. Sometimes it doesn't make a whole lot of common sense, like why does the middle school lose points because their kids did better than the state expected? That's the craziest thing I ever heard, you know? To me, I hope that person who ever come up with that ideal, they've already fired them and sent them out the door because that's dumb. You don't hear of stuff like that, but that's the kind of nonsense that sometimes we have to deal with.
I understand that.
But I can assure you that we are doing everything we can each and every day. And listen, I will have a conversation with any parent. My phone number's been published enough in the paper that you can call my cell phone. I asked, don't call, please, after ten, eleven o'clock at night, but, you know, you can call my cell phone. You can call this building. You can email me. I will have a conversation with anybody who's willing to sit down and have a conversation, plain and simple. And again, my telephone number is six oh six, six four three, seven eight nine nine. And if you don't have it, it's your fault because it's been pledged.
Thank you, Joyce.
So thank you. We appreciate you coming, and we will look into some of that.
Well, can we work on the notification of how we notify parents from this last one?
Eric, I was, I was wanting to get done. With my position, you've got my direct contact.
Yes, I do.
The, what I want is you to work directly with me, and I want any and every idea about how we can do this. Everybody always talks about One Call, but they literally take anywhere, the last One Call that we did, where everybody, nobody took six hours.
Right. That sounds like the old system.
Believe it or not, One Call is considered nationwide. Unless you're paying for a government sponsor like the one you're talking about, we literally can't afford it.
Right.
If we can get some grants or something to do that, that'd be great. But right now, I think we're paying almost fifteen thousand dollars a year for One Call, so.
We need to look into some communication grants.
Well, and that's not the intent of One Call. One Call wasn't made to be a notification system in case of emergency.
For an emergency alert, right.
It's made to say, Kona Ice is coming.
Well, how about notifying Dispatch to put it on Everbridge if it's that way? I mean, if it's a community threat that is involving this entire community, so what if Grandma gets the phone call? As long as the right people got the phone call, can we not do that? Because they lay, I mean, that map lassos everybody.
We can ask Ronnie. I, I don't know. I don't know what the possibility is.
Maybe talk to him about that if we're looking into something else.
You know, we try, you know, we're only as good as the information that we know about.
Right.
So right now, we're looking at social media, and if the time comes out of ten, we're going to start repeating. The problem is, if you're at work and, you know, your boss is going out-
You can't get on your phone.
We actually have no other way of notifying them because we legally can't call a business to notify them, so if you all can help us, you can email me directly, or we have a general district email info at s-school.kywarsports.com. If you can find something that's more of a collective way for us to notify parents instantaneously, I'll implement it, but I got to know what it is. If I don't know about it, I can't do it.
Right.
And we have to understand that consumers of our money can't be cost-provided, you know, but if you, if you can talk to everybody, you know, find out what are they using, you know, because we ask people, and nine times out of ten, it's Twitter and Facebook, and that's one reason why we have that website notification too. But when Mr. Saylor has us do any type of announcement, I do it on everything that we currently have available. So if you can find us a better way, because, you know, one of the big complaints we got was, well, I don't even use Facebook.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then it's like, okay, well, how can we get you? Well, I have a telephone. Well, in that regard, the only option we got was One Call, and it's going to be delayed. So if we can find ways to get that information out, if you can let me know it does, then I got to just know what it is.
Right, and it's going to-
Unfortunately, there will be some people that don't get notified, and we can't help it, you know, but we can get hit a majority of all the different avenues, and as of right now, we hit every one of them, except we don't do Instagram, we don't do Snapchat. They're probably there with pictures, so that's not going to be held up aside.
Why not?
You know, if it doesn't work, so that's something that's catched. You can come up with it, if you don't mind you can have my personal information.
I do. Absolutely. I will work with you, Jeremy, on it. I promise. That's, I now have a homework. Now I have homework.
There might be somebody else, but if we had thought that there was any way possible that that threat extended outside of the school walls the second call, we would not have dismissed.
I don't care how much time it takes for my kids to get home, as long as they make it home in peace.
Just know that we were privileged, the information that you all don't know, you won't know unless it comes out in a public trial, and it won't because it's juveniles. So we were, we were entitled to some information that is privileged and you will never know, but I can guarantee you this. I know Trent Lovett. Trent Lovett is the superintendent at Marshall County. I serve on a board with him, and I see him at least once every two months. I've seen him two times in the last two months. I see the man's face. I see the-
Devastation.
Devastation that's on his face. I see the worry lines that's on his face. I know what he's went through as an individual and what he's had to live with, and that is something as a superintendent I never want to have to deal with. So we're not going to take chances.
As a parent, I don't ever have to-
We're not going to take chances with the lives of kids. And I wish that I could guarantee everybody in this room right now that every one of our staff members and our students are one hundred percent safe. I can't do that. I can't make that statement. I would be lying to you if I did, but I, I can say that we're doing everything we can to provide a safe environment. We are better today than we were six months ago. We don't have an SRO. That is a simple stated fact. But, you know, there are things that we're doing to try to make things safer, to communicate better, and we're open to, again, any type of information. You contact Jeremy, you contact me, you email us, you call us, you do whatever. We will do whatever we can to implement things and make our kids safe, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
As long as there's an open line of communication, I will be doing my homework. And I don't care to because I have kids that are here and lived here my whole life, pretty much.
Yeah, and I don't know, we had a situation at the middle school today. Middle school parents got a letter today. Anybody got a middle school parent here? You should have got a letter this afternoon about a possible threat. We don't even know if it was a threat, but you know what? We decided, I'm not going to let this get caught up that it's a threat or not a threat. I'm going to make, not make that decision. We notified our parents.
We can't make that decision. You can't.
But we wanted to make sure that we notified. We've got nothing to hide. It does me no good to hide something. I, I don't get paid any more. I don't get paid any less. It does me no good to hide something. And if anybody knows, since I've been here, I've gotten complaints because we send letters home because, why are you sending that letter home? This is getting ridiculous now every time somebody does something. You're sending a letter home. So, I mean, it's one of those-
You're not going to make everybody happy.
You can't win and make everybody happy, but we're doing everything we can, and we will make decisions that's in the best interest of kids, and that's what we do every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, if you want to approach the podiums?
The reason I came here this afternoon is it the first time in-
Come up here so we can hear you.
My name is Joyce Rollins. I don't have any kids of my own that's in school now, but I do have a grandson that I've raised for sixteen years. I've had him ever since he's been six days old. The little colored boy just went back there. I've had him ever since he's been six months old. I do consider that them babies are mine. I love them very much. I'm sure everybody in here does. Tyler is big enough. He can get off the bus and he can walk home. Victor can't because from my best stop, we've got one, two, three, four, five, maybe six blocks from Broadway. I'm going to cry because it hurt me so bad. He was led out on South Madison, and he walked home this afternoon. I was scared. And when he got to me where I was at, he said, I thought I was going to get run over. Now, what were you going to do? If the news came to me, then he got killed by a car. What are you going to do?
First, I've been made aware of it, ma'am. We can, Mr. Burkhardt, our transportation director's sitting right here. We can check into that situation and see what happened.
I hope it doesn't happen again because on the same route that my grandkids is on every morning and in the afternoon. I'm not calling no names. I'm sure you all done know all about it because the grandparents does. One of the little students from South Urban, he was left on a bus. He went all the way to high school, to the best stop. What would that baby done if it got out there on that eighty-nine and got killed? It wouldn't be enough money in this whole world could have paid for the love for a child. Am I right or am I wrong?
I'm well aware of the situation you're talking about, and it has been dealt with.
That's right. It's not just, it don't happen just here. It happens in every county. But we're going to have these bus aides. They get paid for doing this, and I know they have a hard job. They really, honestly do. We have a hard job getting these kids up, getting them ready for school, making sure they're dressed, they're warm. Our love goes with them at school. What happens at school? They come home. I ask my babies, did you have a great day at school? If one wants to fuss, if one wants to argue, no, we draw a line. You have your time to talk. You have your time to talk. I got this ear listening for you. I got this ear listening for you, but I got both of these ears listening to both of you. I'm sure everybody in here. They've got kids. They've got grandkids. We all love them. But to me, he doesn't have a daddy because his daddy passed away when he was six months old. I got him when he was six months old. To me, I've had him for eight years. That's my baby. My grandson, his mother got d- grounded when he was two years old, but she didn't, she's a birth mother, but she wasn't a mother. I got that baby when he was six days old. I signed my John Henry on that paper at the university hospital that I would be responsible for taking care of him until the day he turned eighteen years old. I still have responsibility for that. I have responsibility for him, just like everybody in here has a responsibility. I, my responsibility is to feed these, clothe them, send them to school, and love them. That's all I can do. And it's hard. It really is. I'm the only one taking care of these two boys, but I love them, and I'm going to continue to do it.
We have a lot of great grandparents in this community, just like you, that are taking care of grandkids.
That's right. That's right. But if you would, if you would, if you would draw this to a line this afternoon, I'll say, please. I'll also even say, I beg you. We have got to be more safe for these kids getting on bus and off of bus at their school, getting back on the bus. He wasn't even on the right bus this afternoon. He was led out on South Madison Avenue and walked from South Madison to North Madison.
We'll check on it.
In time, I left from there and got back down and come around. I didn't see him, but when I went back up Plum Street, I seen him because he was running to meet me, and he was scared to death.
We'll check on it, and we'll be back in contact with you.
I appreciate it very much. Well, thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's report in the board member forum.
You have a notification of fundraising activities. You all asked to see those on about every three-month basis, so you have those. You also have a notification of personnel actions for this past month, and those are just for your information only. You have my activity report, or you will have my activity report for this month. And I sent the last one to you all by email. I, I think that you got it. I apologize for not having it at the last board meeting. And also, you have our energy report, and we, we have some concerns with a couple of our different schools in terms of energy, and we are on top of that, and we're trying to make sure that if we have an ongoing issue, we've made a ton of adjustments at the high school on some issues there, that we should start seeing some positive changes in some of these. If not, then we're prepared to call the utility service to have them come in and do an evaluation, but we are in the process of doing that. So that is my report, unless one of the board members has something that they want to bring up.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have closed session, so I'll need a motion to go into closed session. Your motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?